I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next regular scheduled meeting is March 9, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center here at 3,500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Would you please silence or turn off your cell phones? Consent agenda. The Minister of the Board meeting of the Supervisor's Special Meeting held on January 30, 2018, and the regular Board of Supervisors meeting held Friday, February 9, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Comment? Comment? Roll call, Chrissy.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Siegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes.
Action agenda. Resolution number 2018-02-23-08. A resolution of Sun 'n' Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award the bid for the maintenance assessment rate study designated as RFP 17-12. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry, I have to get Tanya, right? Motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Tanya.
Good morning, Supervisors. We were scheduled to have two presentations today. The Government Services Group, Inc. has withdrawn their bid for this assessment study. They felt that it was not in their best interest to, knowing the price differential, not in their best interest to actually move forward with that. We do have a presentation today from Stephen McDonough with GAI Consultants, Community Services Group. Stephen is the Chief Economist and Director and Economics Group Project Manager, and I'd like to introduce him now.
I also thank the Board for this opportunity to present some information to you as it relates to this assessment study. As Tanya introduced, my name is Stephen McDonald. I'm the Chief Economist with GAI Consultants. And I had just very, very brief comments. I want to talk a little bit about what GAI and Community Solutions is, a little bit about my experience, so you have that understanding, and then just very briefly about what I think we're trying to accomplish. Then I would more than certainly open it for your questions to clarify any outstanding issues. GAI is a national consulting firm with 1,000 employees basically spread all over the United States. Within that group, it's a bunch of engineers, which is a good thing, but at the end of the day, we've created a very specialized, highly specialized group within GAI called Community Solutions Group. And that Community Solutions Group has a lot of different disciplines other than engineering that include economics, planning, public policy, all those types of things. And as the name implies, we have a real passion around our main focus, which is to try to provide communities with very viable, creative solutions to most any economic, financial, planning, resource, public service, or public infrastructure issue or need. I'm bragging, but I really believe you won't find a more qualified, creative, and dedicated group to trying to help communities with issues they can't solve alone. And that's really the value we believe we bring to every assignment. A little bit about myself, despite my youthful appearance, I've been providing economic and financial consulting services for public and private organizations for almost 30 years. If there's a tax, rate, charge, fee, or assessment that has been, is, or has been used to fund public service or infrastructure, I've had experience with creating, implementing, or projecting the same. In fact, I was a partner at Burton &amp; Associates way back when, which is a consulting firm that you've had some experience with as it relates to your current assessments. And it is really a very, very small world, too, because I will say, at the risk of calling GSG the best at doing this, I did learn from the best in that respect from George Nickerson, who was a founder of GSG. Back in the early 90s, we created some, I would call them groundbreaking, assessment methodology. So I have a tremendous amount of experience that hopefully we can bring and leverage as it relates to this assessment study. In terms of what we're trying to accomplish, assessments are among a group of revenues that are supposed to be based on benefit, use, impact, some reflection of what the user, and therefore the payer, is receiving in terms of benefits or incurring in terms of cost. That's completely opposite of taxes. Taxes, by their nature, don't care what your use, benefit, or impact is on services. And so, in essence, when you look at what public policy and law is trying to do, it's trying to relate that need, or that benefit, or that use into what you're obligated to pay. And there's just basically two fundamental requirements. And actually, there's really only one fundamental. The very first fundamental requirement is, when you have an assessment like this, you simply cannot charge more than the benefit received. That's just the basis of what you're trying to do. An allocation methodology is related to that issue, but not wholly, okay? Because the other fundamental issue is that, as an assessment relates to other individuals or properties, or whomever is being burdened with the assessment, that benefit needs, and that fee, that assessment needs to be relative to each other. And the reason I say an assessment methodology is related, but doesn't necessarily solve that first problem, is you can have a fair and equitable way of allocating costs, but if costs are greater than the benefit received, then you haven't met your legal test. It's important, too, then, to ask what the question, the main question is, what is benefit? Benefit is not, benefit does not translate into use. And I'll give you a perfect example. I've lived in Florida for 30 years. I've owned a home for 30 years, and I've paid fire assessments for 30 years. But I have never once had a call, a fire call. I've never had an ambulance that includes a fire truck. So in essence, I would argue, I've never used fire services. So does that mean I've never benefited from the assessments I've paid, or the assessments I'll continue to pay? The answer's no, because the real benefit is not a fire truck coming to my house. The real benefit is about the readiness to serve, the protection of my property, and the reduction of my homeowner's insurance. Because I would pay a heck of a lot more in homeowner's insurance if I was served by a volunteer fire department versus a full-time fire department. Or if I had a fire department that had an ISO rating of six versus two. So when you develop assessments for fire, you may think of them as calls for service, right? That's a very common methodology. Frankly, it's not the true measure of benefit, but it rationally and proportionally allocates the cost of that. And the reason then it's acceptable is because my insurance benefits, the reduction of my homeowner's insurance, is always much greater than that assessment I pay. So therefore, it meets those two tests. So that's just, again, when you think about assessments, those are some thoughts that you would keep in mind in terms of what we would propose. So now, as it relates to what we've proposed, and I want to specifically just talk about our scope of work. At the end of the day, and I know there may be some questions related to, well, the scope of work today seems very similar to what was recommended maybe in the past when we did the study in 2014, or when we proposed in 2016. If you read our proposal, a process to review and make recommendations about assessments, is that a process? It's really simply a step, a series of steps. And I think kind of the two most important aspects of our proposal, other than the technical things that we want to go do, which is gather the data and those kinds of things, anytime you approach an assessment, the very first thing you do is sit down, and this is what we did in 2014, what we recommended in 2016, what we're recommending again, you sit down with all interested parties that you want to gather. And so that can be staff, that can be the council itself, that can be active residents, whomever. You sit down and ask and find out what stated goals and objectives are. Confirm that. That's the most important thing. So that's always step one in the process. Then there's a bunch of series of things that we have to do once we understand those to collect data. But the most important process step, then, as we proposed, is to evaluate, and we say this, evaluate the benefits to property, if any, make that comment, stemming from the existing improvements in current allocation methodology. That's the point at which, based on everything that you've gathered, including that feedback and input from staff and council and residents, that's when you try to then think about, how should assessments best be allocated? And the reason I call out "if any," just because you have a cost incurred, just because the district is incurring some sort of cost for some type of service, doesn't always mean it translates to benefit. And that's really the most important thing to understand, is how is that benefit translated to then those property owners? So that's why, again, the proposal may appear to be similar, but most importantly, it doesn't call out a predetermined way of allocating your assessments. We never approach an assessment study with a predetermined notion, here's how you should do it. And I think that's really the most important thing to understand. And that even includes fire assessments. If someone asks me to do a fire assessment, I would provide them the same steps and lists of procedures, because I'm not going to predetermine that fire assessment should be done by cause of service. That's a method, that's a very common method, that's a method GSG uses. But we've used different methods for allocating that is more consistent with goals and objectives of different communities. So my fire assessments for one community may be cause of service-related, for another community may just be a per-unit basis, okay? So it really depends on the circumstances of what we're trying to accomplish in terms of what you would recommend for an assessment. And I think that's certainly all I had, and I would open it up for questions if you have.
Thank you very much. Makes sense for me?
My only question would be, if we did this, say, in two years, we'd have to go through the whole, start from scratch again, right? I mean, if we wanted to look at it again?
No, not necessarily. You know, what happens within assessment programs, and this is, and I do a lot of water and sewer rate studies, and I do a lot of water and sewer rate studies in a lot of rural communities across the country in which, you know, they establish a system of rates that's based on their current users. Well, their current users are generally, as they're in suburbs of major cities, just kind of residential. Then here comes a big industrial user, changes the complexion of the community, and changes the impact on the water system. And they go, well, our current rates don't address this issue. So they would have to address those rates. I think the same is true about assessments. You can create an assessment methodology and have it live for decades, as long as nothing within the community kind of changes the real benefits and relationship of benefits that people are incurring, or you don't get some big, you know, different use that you've never had before.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question.
I just got one question. I'm looking at the scope of work, which is, I assume, that is, the procedures that we would take if we went forward with this. So just to make it easy on me, tell me what the difference is between this and 2014 again?
The steps are exactly the same.
And how, if the steps are exactly the same, then why would we expect the results to be different this time?
Because it's your goals and objectives. In 2014, we were specifically instructed by staff with council's input, and I don't know if any of you were there in 2014, I don't know how many of you were kind of really involved, but you have an economic and market deficiency in your current assessments as it relates to vacant lots. That doesn't mean it's wrong, that doesn't mean relatively as you've created assessment, that doesn't mean there's anything wrong with that methodology. But the goals and objectives in 2014 were specifically to address that issue. Now, what you can't do with assessments, and this is the most important thing, you can't just be arbitrary. You can't say things like, well, I like them, so I want to charge them less, or I don't like them, and I want to charge them more. So while you recognize something you needed to change, and that's really kind of my point, once the market tells you something isn't working within your program, you have to readdress and try to figure out a way that gets you to your end result of making that adjustment. And that was based on those characteristics and attributes that we defined. But that was, you know, the staff recommendation, that was our recommendation, based on staff input to say, we need this fee adjusted. But so it was a recommendation that had to, at that time, met legal requirements, trying to meet your objectives.
So if we gave you the same objectives as was given to you in 2014, we'd get the same results?
No.
Or we wouldn't?
No.
Fair.
Potentially not the same, not the same attributes to try to define benefit. That's what I'm saying. There's so many different ways that you can try to define benefit between classes of property. And Tanya can correct me if I'm wrong, I can't exactly remember what the 2014 recommendation was, but whether it was lot size, or square footage of house, or, you know, whatever, those were attributes that we said, hey, this may fix our market and economic deficiency. And that's how we want to define it, and therefore, these are the recommended rates based on that. I can re-review this now, because in 2014, the Board wasn't interested in doing that. I can re-review this now, and we can come up with other ways of thinking about the benefit and different attributes, that don't have to be the same attributes as we discussed in 2014.
So that first meeting, then, of you sitting down with us to discuss the objectives, that's the whole ball of wax right there?
Basically, yes. But, oh, I'm sorry, no, I didn't mean to. Well, but again, I'm going to counsel you in the sense, I'm not a lawyer, you know, I'm an economist. I really work on trying to figure out how to best do this, but just counsel you in that, my point, you could say, you know, I really like the hospital. They are a big economic driver of our community. That's absolutely a true statement. I don't want to charge them any assessments. That may be your objective, but you can't do that by law. So we would just say, if any of those objectives kind of don't meet the legal standards, you know, we got to figure out some way, how to think about it. So let me address that issue. And we talked about this in 2014. So you can, as a council, you have the ability to do that. We can come up with an assessment methodology that may charge the hospital, right, some rate. But you could then identify the hospital as being an important economic development generator for the community, so we're going to pay their assessment out of some other unrestricted available funds. So do you get my point?
Yeah.
So you can do things outside of the assessments in the sense that you're recognizing the benefit that the hospital may drive for the community, but the assessment methodology then stays pure. Because it really is trying to say, what is the hospital, what should the hospital pay as it relates to homeowners, as it relates to other commercial, as it relates to vacant? Once you establish that, then you can, you can...
All right. Based on your previous experience, who would you want, who are the best people to sit down with in Sun 'n' Lake to get these objectives?
Well, I think staff, you know, clearly, staff. They're day-to-day into the finances, I mean, they understand, you know, what's collected, they understand, you know, what's not collected, they understand those issues. I mean, clearly, council, you guys are the policymakers. And then residents. And I think residents are an important component to it, because I can distinctly remember, back in 2014, and we were, you know, kind of discussing the proposed rates. And again, this is only my personal, professional opinion, but there were only two residents in the audience at the time. But every council member objected to the recommendation, kind of on the basis, well, the members of my community don't, won't accept that. And I think if there is and are issues within the community, and they understood what was being recommended, there probably would have been, you know, a much greater presence at that meeting. So my point being, you will hear from individuals in the community, but it probably is best to try to get a very representative kind of sample. So having a public workshop, hearing from residents is a great way to get input. So, I mean, unless I've missed a group, I would recommend that that's what you think about.
Okay, thank you.
From a mechanical standpoint, can you do things like, or can we do things like differentiate income properties from owner-occupied properties, for instance? And the second part of that would be, if we were to do that, I would assume everyone who currently owns a property would be grandfathered under the old assessment method?
So let me think about your first question. And so I think what I hear you saying would be, there is a different benefit received to a property owner that owns property but rents it versus a property owner that lives in the property area. Is that kind of the thought? You know, we would consider it, we'd think about it. My first inclination is, though, when you take two properties that are identical, you know, let's not, you know, let's not put one on a golf course and one on, let's just say, two homes that are the same size on the same lot, you know, right next to each other, one's a rental property and one's a homeowner property, that's immaterial to the benefits received. Because it really is the occupants that receive the benefits from the assessments. And so you would, from a methodology perspective, you would kind of ignore the ownership. Because the theory would be, a occupied owner would be paying the assessment. Renters, if the homeowner who's renting the house is the one who's burdened with the assessment, but theory being, they're going to pass it on in the rent lease of the property. So at the end of the day, regardless of the ownership structure, the benefit really accrues to those residents and the occupants, therefore, that's how you would have to think about it. But again, those are the kinds of questions and issues and objectives that we would want to hear about, and then decide what we do. Now, to your latter question, no. There is, in essence, no grandfathering based on current ownership and current assessments. The idea really is, it's just, it's a funding mechanism, it's assessment as a whole. So, you know, if we made a recommendation that altered rates, because we're trying to, you know, make that benefit fair and equitable across people, it would be unfair and equitable, unfair and unequitable, if one person paid a different rate simply because they're grandfathered versus someone who pays a different rate. So the rates themselves, by those classes, have to basically be the same.
So the answer to the first part is that you can't do that, or you wouldn't recommend doing that?
I didn't say can't.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I didn't hear it can't either, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. No, I didn't say can't.
Okay.
And I think, again, what you're discussing, and let me put it in the context of seasonal residence. I've seen methodologies and rate studies that make adjustments when they know the homeowner is a snowbird or seasonal resident. Yeah, so the nature of how someone owns a home can be considered, absolutely. But in that one example you gave, I just, that was kind of the recommendation. But I didn't say you can't do something. But it would have to be justifiable and based on some sort of rationale for the benefit.
I would, I mean, the assumption I was making was you would deal with them as more of a commercial enterprise than a residence.
Well, and that's...
That's not appropriate.
Yeah, no, 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 I get, no, I think your point is very interesting, and actually, that's what we want to hear. I never thought about it that way. And so, but it would depend on that also, then, that list of services being provided. So if there is a special service that's being provided that relates to a commercial enterprise, maybe you do need to consider something.
Most of the questions have actually been answered, but I do have a few. One is, everything's based on, well, I shouldn't say everything, but it's based on benefit, okay? What do we receive as a benefit, that's how you kind of come up with it, with the methodology. And I know that there's some, certainly, at least my personal opinion, is there are a lot of inequities here, I think. Now, you're not an attorney, but at the same token, let me use an example. Unimproved lots seem to pay a lot of money for an unimproved lot versus an improved lot, okay? Yet you can't break out unimproved lots and say, look, you know, these are really disproportionate, you need to change this rate. You can't call out that piece of the pie and separate it, because they're not getting the same benefit that the others are getting.
Absolutely, and that's what we tried to do in 2014. I think beyond that one big inequity that you may, again, think exists, perceive to be exist, I won't call it an inequity in the sense that whomever devised the method to say, here's how they benefit... to say, here's how they benefit, um, that may be, you know, legally speaking, that may be a very rational approach. But your market, the market is telling you, economics and the market is telling you, it is disproportionate. Because people wouldn't be abandoning property rights if there wasn't something, from an economic market perspective, incorrect about those assessments. I, I think to, for, for your protection, for the community's protection, it does sound easy to just say, okay, let me take my rate structure, let me take my assessment lots out of the picture, let me just create a rate. That, that, um, begins to become simply arbitrary. So, so what you, from a legal perspective, what you want to avoid is doing that, just becoming arbitrary and taking rates and saying, boom, you know, I don't like that rate, not that you don't like those individuals, but I don't like that rate, I'm gonna arbitrarily change it. So what we tried to do in 2014, and what we would try to do here, is devise the approach and the methodology based on the fundamentals underlying the benefit and get to the same endpoint. Because if there are deficiencies in this current structure among, you know, this particular class, there's probably others that you also might want to correct. And I think that, that, again, is based on, you know, looking at the information.
Well, with that said, if, let me pursue this a little bit more. With that said, if there's, if it's disproportionate at the low end, let's say they're getting charged too much, and at the high end, let's say they are getting what would be based on benefit, they're getting a fair rate, okay? Does that mean that if you lower one end, you're going to raise the other end, because you're saying it's disproportionate?
That sometimes, most times, can be the, um, the, the outcome, absolutely. Not always, because I think, again, going back to my point about the hospital.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you have other options for revenue sources. Um, uh, they're, they're, you know, they're not as, um, they're limited because they're not, they're not as, if you were a city, you know, there's lots of different revenue sources and, and types of things you can take advantage of. But there's other ways that you can fund your services, so, you know, you, you can, I guess to my point about the hospital, you can devise a, a methodology and a system, but decide to fund some portion of those services a different way, thereby not, you know, reducing this and, and not making this explode. There are options.
Based on the, uh, the methodology that you did the last time, it was based on a, a unit size, I think it was an ERU or...
Very typical, yeah, method use.
Okay. And what it did is, it really raised the rates considerably. If we had gone with that methodology, it would have raised the assessment rates for those owner-occupied homes really high. The unimproved lots, which you don't get the benefit, and I understand that, were really brought down low, because that's how they kind of balanced it out, because it's a revenue stream for the district. The district says, okay, if I catch, if I get this amount of money for the occupied or, or, or the properties that are improved versus the unimproved, then I can maintain the district and keep a balanced budget. And what I, what I'd hate to see is some of the recommendations that were in the past, where we are, we're looking at 14% increase over multiple years on the assessments. And now, I know you have no control over that, you just give us the methodology, we either have to adopt it or not adopt it. But that's why I kept on saying, is there a way that we can keep where we are today fairly stable, which I think you've already answered, and then the unimproved areas that really, I think, are paying extra to have them reduced? But then you said it wouldn't be grandfathered. So if they own, if they owed us assessments in the past, they'd still owe us those assessments. Those will never go away, is what you're saying.
Uh, yeah, I mean, if you're talking, correct. If you're talking about someone who has backed unpaid assessments, and it's a lien on their property?
Yeah. And I understand you're doing the methodology and not the legal side, but I'm just trying to understand. We have a lot of property out there, for an example, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out, when you do your methodology, you do it pretty much on a, a standard. You say, unimproved lots, improved lots, residential, commercial, you know, and so on, and then you come up with whatever that methodology is, and we apply it to the lots that we want, or all lots, that we want to apply.
Yeah, yeah. Now, I, I did hear, if I heard you correctly, and I, and again, I just want to comment, I, did you say unoccupied homes?
Unoccupied as well as, um...
You said owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied.
Okay. Well, again, you know, the, the law says, just because a home is not occupied, doesn't mean it doesn't receive benefits. So the occupancy status, again, because you're, you're building the capacity for it to be occupied. I mean, so the occupancy status is kind of a moot point, but...
All right, I understand, okay. So, and I understand it's the methodology you're coming up with. I, I know you can solve all these other issues, I'm just trying to think it through, so that when you do come up with a methodology, how does it, you know, how is it really going to affect people?
Yeah.
And back to what Ray said, if all things were equal, and our community hasn't changed, and our objectives are fairly similar, I don't know what he's gonna say, but if they are, and you, would you, you'd be looking at the methodology that you provided last time, would you be altering it with a different type of methodology?
Yeah, yeah. And I'll, you know, I, I think, absolutely. Again, because if it didn't meet, so clearly, as you said today, whether you were back on the board in 2014 or not, if you're saying the recommendation did not meet certain objectives, community objectives, then the, the method that we proposed just didn't meet it, so yeah, I'd have to rethink it. Because again, I will tell you, and, and I don't come in here with predetermined notion about how to do it, but I think one way to think about it, because I, I think I read, somebody mentioned, you know, you're unique. Frankly, you're not unique. I mean, I think what you meant is, we have a complicated structure, absolutely. But there's plenty of districts that, that have residential, commercial, industrial, and different uses, and they're funding different services, and they all grapple with the same thing. So one recommendation that we didn't consider in 2014, that I may recommend, as you think about it, given your objectives, is decompose all of your services. And, and so think about, you know, here's what I spend on roads. That's, that's a dollar amount. So I go and, I'll do a methodology for the benefit from roads. And so you have a little, you have an assessment. You know, you're, you're, um, and just, Tanya, you can correct me if I'm wrong on the surface, but, uh, security, you know, security has, you know, a cost, and, you know, you come up with a benefit. Street lighting, uh, recreation, you know, talk of, you know, take what you do and unbundle it, and then you can have a different methodology for each service, but then at the end of the day, the sum of those would represent the rates that you apply to property. I think the reason we didn't think about that in 2014 is, then that just expands the complexity with how you have to explain it.
Okay.
Right? And communities like to be straight and simple, and right now, you have total cost allocated, you know, and here's your assessment rates. And that may create those, may create those inequities, I don't know. But so if that's an issue, if we unbundle it, maybe we do get to a point where residential, the only thing affected at the end of the day would be vacant lots. That, you know, that would be an approach.
Thank you. Um, you did say we are unique. We are unique.
You are unique. I didn't mean unique.
We are unique.
You, you are unique as a community. I meant your, it was related to your assessment problem. I shouldn't say that, not a problem. Your assessments are unique, your assessments aren't, but you are unique, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yes.
So, how many...
Every community is unique.
Just out of curiosity, and I don't know if you can give me this information off the top of your head, how many unique, special districts have you worked with?
Oh, gosh, um...
Twenty, hundred, fifty?
Oh, it's, it's probably at least thirty, thirty, forty. I mean, every CDD that I've ever worked with in thirty years has the same challenge, because there are always a development of regional impact, they always have multiple types of uses, residential, but between multifamily, single-family versus condo versus, you know, and then industrial, and then have to have an assessment that kind of, you know, gets all these services funded. So, um, quite a few, quite a few. And I, when I, when I meant what isn't unique about your assessment, again, I think what the real comment was about is if you're, if you were a single, if, if all you had was residential properties, single-family homes, and all you were doing was providing street lighting, that's an easy assessment methodology, it's per home. We're done. Um, that's really, I think, what the comment was meant to be, is, yes, it is, the community's unique, but the, and the, and the, um, it is a complex issue.
Mark, I did have... Thank you very much.
I did have a couple of questions that your comments brought to mind. Assuming that we come up with a better or a new methodology, can we then apply that to future years? In other words, shouldn't we, looking at on an annual or some, biannual or some basis, adjusting our rates to better reflect reality? We haven't adjusted rates in nine years.
Yes.
It doesn't make sense to me that we wouldn't, I don't want to do this every year.
Yes. Uh, and again, that, that's, I think, the question about, do, you know, no, you can have a methodology that, that stands, you know, for a long, long time, which is just an apportionment. Um, the input, which would be your cost, you don't have to redo an assessment study when that input increases. Um, and what I have seen communities do, and this is legally permissible, I've seen them adopt a methodology and incorporate within that adoption, annual increases based on some index. So, you know, pick an index, and utilities do this, I can adopt a utility, a rate structure, and then say, you know, here's, here's what the rates are today, and then they will go up by the CPI every year. Um, and that, that's a very common, common approach.
Thanks again, I appreciate it. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, I appreciate the time.
Okay. I guess at this time, it would be public comment?
Bill Norcross, resident. When we start talking about, oh, Mr. McDonald, thank you very much for the presentation. When we start talking about attributes and benefits and assessments and things like that, you look at the equation, the assessments equal benefits. Benefits are taxes. A pleasant way of saying, taxes are benefits. I have found that in my city, in Massachusetts, we had a reevaluation, it was done by a Clemshaw Group, and they basically, a single-family house, it was on a square footage of the house, three thousand feet, you pay taxes on three thousand feet, whether you're next to a chemical company, a garbage dump, or anything else, there was no leeway, which is kind of like unfair. But that's why I'm not in Lynn, Massachusetts. You have the attributes here, uh, the hospital. The hospital, last time I checked, over ten years ago, they were paying $125,000 in tax liability. I think that's a little low. You also have different commercial rates, you have different property rates for owners, you have, this is a can of worms, you know it, that's why it's so difficult. You have special rates for military, single persons, widows, disabled people, they all get discounts.
No, we don't.
They do now.
Not on assessments, they don't, I don't believe. Not on assessments, they get it on their, they get it on their property taxes, but not on assessments.
Well, basically, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay.
You're talking about, you know, you're facing a grade of $700 right now?
But that's an assessment. It's, it, as a veteran, I don't get a discount, you don't get a discount on that.
But if we were widows or were disabled?
We're not. The assessment would be exactly the same.
See, I've never checked it personally, I've just heard hearsay about it. So anyhow, um, that is, uh, that is, it's a very difficult, we're a special area, we're a district, and have different roles, and I understand that. On the other point that you brought up, Mr. McDonald, you said something about the fire assessment. To me, that's the camel's nose going under the tent. Here we go again, another tax, why? We get a break, well, we had fire department on property, uh, what we used to call hook and ladder, and we did get a break on our insurance already. So why do we want to have another tax? That's what everybody will say, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands where a resident comes from. Thank you very much for your time.
Dave Albig, resident. The gentleman mentioned that he was directed by the staff who give him his direction. I was on the Board of Supervisors when he did this first study. Uh, he didn't get what direction he ended up with by coming to, by, by any recommendation of the Board of Supervisors, and Tanya was on the staff. Could you tell me who on the staff gave you the direction to, to use the methodology you used to, uh, to, uh, develop the, uh, study?
Just clarification, staff directed us to use the methodology, you were, you had some, how's you got it there? Sorry. Just clarify, because I want to put, um, Tanya, I don't want to put her on the spot. The, the comment was not that staff or council directed us to use that methodology. Staff and council provided the input that said, hey, you know, we have some sort of apparent, you know, issue with our assessments, can we solve X, Y, and Z? So, yes, at the time, Michael Wright, as the director, gave a set input to say, here are the things I want, um, that we, we think we need to solve. That, that was the direction, not direction to use this specific methodology.
Uh, of course, this is only my opinion, but we, we're, we're operating under this Burton, uh, methodology, which is, which is a good, it's really a good model, it's a really good model. I'm gonna ask the gentleman another question. Can you take the, the existing Burton methodology and tweak it based upon today versus the last time we had a, could you do that?
I, I would have to say no, because tweaking, as you, you know, defined it, um, again, kind of suggests you're, you're just being arbitrary about what you want to charge. And so, um, I, I, you need to approach the study, as I, you know, have kind of trying, been trying to explain, is if there are issues that you want to resolve, you have to resolve them based on an understanding of how that benefit accrues to those properties, then make those adjustments. So no, you cannot just take a current assessment rate and say, this class of property needs to pay less.
Okay. Um, the Burton study did a, uh, they used as a benchmark, single-family dwellings. And everything's pretty much equal in that regard, and then they went based upon the benefit received, up and down, based upon whatever the type of classification your property was in. Still a good model. The, um, the assessment study you did before was more like an ad valorem. It's, it's almost like a tax, because you use square footage and it threw everything, it messed up everything. Single families were all over the place, hospitals all over the place, tangled woods all over the place, not that this is, that's not, uh, it's just, so are we gonna get a different result this time than we had last time? Or we're gonna, based on, are you gonna base it on, what are you gonna use for a benchmark?
I, I don't have, and I don't come in with predetermined notion of what you want to use to base an assessment on.
Okay.
I mean, I, I... I mean, I think I was pretty clear about that. You know, as it related to 2014, using square footage was a good way.
It was a terrible way, in my opinion, of course.
Of course, that's your opinion. But I will tell you, I will tell you the Burton methodology, because I was a partner with Mike Burton. I have been for a long time. I know how he does assessment methodologies. I've done assessment methodologies with Burton. And our approach in 2014, if that was, you know, again, community objectives, instructions, Burton would have provided the same recommendation.
Okay. When I said tweaking this thing, the, you know, it needs tweaking because there's no fire department. We've got an expanded community services, recreational services department is bigger, expanded the security department. And I don't, I think there should be some manner by which capital needs going forward are included in some sort of assessment. There seems to be a misconception that we need to raise our assessments, and I don't know why. Even though they haven't been raised in nine years, the reason they haven't been raised was no need to. 2009, we've got, we've got, we've got the same money in the bank that we had in 2009, but since 2009, we spent close to $25 million in capital expenditures and golf course transfers. So, that being the case, maybe our assessment rate is right. I don't, except for maybe the unimproved lots. Nobody's going to buy an unimproved lot in Sunland Lake, at least if they had any sense they wouldn't do it. And lowering the rate's not going to improve the payment, payment amount, the 29% that are paying now. That's not going to get any better. But, so I think we need to be careful and make sure we do, we do this right if we do it. I don't, I don't like what I heard today. I'm disappointed that the other, that the other firm decided not to do a presentation, but I, I think we ought to really think hard and long about it. And if we do choose this gentleman, he needs to be given direction other than what he got previously. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Now, just a comment on that is, this doesn't automatically mean that we will go up. It's just a method of check and balance, is the way I view it. A check and balance to say, here's where you're at today, and maybe they can point out some disparities and say, you really should be looking in this direction. But I'm not, until it's adopted, I don't see that as a, any rate increases. So, I mean, this is just fact-finding mission. Are we doing it right? And I don't think we are.
Tom Coste, resident. The word arbitrary was used in terms of what we cannot do. We've been using a methodology that was debated in the district around the year 2000, when Burton first came in, that everything was related to a nominal equivalent residential unit. The debate centered around, what's the difference between a lot in an improved area, which means roads and drainage, versus a single-family resident? And a proportion, a ratio was developed. Just as off the top of my head, I'm going to say that if it's, it was roughly one-third the benefit received. Each department, by the way, costs of various departments of service were used after this ratio was arrived at, the cost to provide a particular service. And those individual services were prorated based on a perceived benefit for an empty lot in an area with no road versus an empty lot in an area with roads and drainage had a different ratio compared to a single-family resident. And the same thing right up through the hospital, where the hospital was rated in terms of the number of rooms in the hospital. And that ratio was also created. So, it appears to me, we came in in 2014 with a totally different methodology. To me, that kind of sounds like it was arbitrary. It was an arbitrary change in methodology based on what the general manager and the board at that time was trying to accomplish, as opposed to what the cost of services are, the benefits, the cost of benefits. It was a complete change. One of the things that we're up against here, and I'm not sure if this has been discussed yet, but we have, we're talking about voters here in the district, people who have the ability to vote for the board and to vote on changes, et cetera. It's all based on the assessment paid. We vote on the basis of our dollars of assessment. Now, if you drastically change the amount of dollars of assessment, for instance, on the hospital, and I think the last time around, if I heard things right, I think the hospital's assessment rate in 2014, had we gone with that, would have been approximately double what it had been up to that time. And what you're doing when you do, and not only the hospital, the big elephants in the room are the hospital and Tanglewood, which is a commercial enterprise. Those people's voting power as to what happens in this district, those two entities would have twice the voting power that they would have had we not changed it. As compared to an individual residence, a single-family home, the owners of those single-family homes would have been reduced. They would have ended up probably not just half, but their relative voting power, their relative influence in the community would have been drastically reduced. And people who own empty lots, for instance, and this, everybody says this can't happen again, but it did happen before. A large developer comes in and wants to buy. Once, it was 6,000 lots. They bought all at once. Now, the district has thrown away all the empty lots that the district used to own. We've given them to the county, and who knows what's going to happen to that? But I think we're messing with dynamite when we change people's voting power in their own community. Is that something that was discussed in 2014? And is that, is that something you would be mindful of as you create these changes in assessments comparative between a lot in the back? We've got 12,000 lots in Sunland. We've got 3,500 homes, roughly a third. 25%, roughly a quarter of the lots are actually improved and occupied lots. Is that, is that, is that thought entered your analysis of this in 2014? And would that also come to play in your, in your analysis going forward if we decide to go with this?
I think it's important for us to hear it and for it to be on the record.
So, it's easy for me to say, politics, voting power, all of those concepts have absolutely nothing to do with benefit assessments. It's not as easy for the community to have to address those issues because they're real. But I'm an economist. I'm obligated to follow Florida law. And there is absolutely nowhere within Florida law that says you should make assessments simply because someone has more voting power and therefore can control the politics of a community. So, the real consideration is for the council, for staff, and for the community to decide if a benefit assessment, as recommended, meets their needs.
But what, in order to, for you to change what we've been doing, you'll have to say that an empty lot gets a different rate of benefit in the future, in the year 2019, than it is going to get in the year 2018. By some arbitrary formula that you're going to come up with, rather than the actual cost of that benefit, fire protect, well, forget fire protection, because that's out of the picture. But let's say security. It was decided in the year 2000 that a empty lot in the back doesn't get any security. That's not even in their proportional rate compared to a single-family resident. What are you going to take away from that lot in the back in order to lower that proportion? I mean, already, those are, those are very minor compared to, I mean, each department was analyzing. Fire protection was in the picture back then, but it's out of the picture now. So automatically, if we just-
Tommy, you got to wrap this up. I'm sorry. I mean, valid points, but, you know, it's been going on for, I've really let it go the extra five minutes. Thank you. Any further public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Kemp?
Yes.
Okay.
So, can I ask, Tanya, I assume the next step then would be to arrange a workshop?
Is that correct?
And we would invite the public, so Tom can bring up his point again?
Okay. Next on the agenda is a discussion of the five-year capital plan. Omar?
Good morning, Supervisor. Omar De Jesus, Finance Director. Per the board's request, we have prepared a five-year capital workbook that's more detailed and comprehensive in nature. The workbook is comprised of the first four pages being a summary of every project that we foresee in the next five years and equipment needs at a general level. Within that summary, there's corresponding pages that go to a further detailed worksheet. Each supporting worksheet is a capital worksheet that is, that provides description of the project and equipment, justification and objective for those projects and equipment needs. So, this is the first time we've had this sort of workshop with the five-year capital. We can go of it two ways. We can go page by page on every equipment item. Or I'd recommend, let's look at the summary pages, discuss the projects recommended, what year they fall in. And if we come across a project that we want to go in further detail, there's that corresponding page, and we can go and visit that page.
I would prefer to go on the summary pages.
Okay. So, the first summary page is the golf fund. Then we'll go ahead and start with the golf fund. I'll turn it over to Jim and Ron and go fund by fund.
Golf fund, you're saying?
Yes. So, our first page, Jim Kurtzborn, General Manager, Sunland Golf Club. As we look at 2018, 19, we're looking at our equipment expenses primarily. We've got $300,000 in expenses. Primarily, those are golf course equipment with the trade-in, the golf carts are on a three-year lease purchase. As we look forward, our big projected expense would be irrigation in 2019, '20. There's a deer run irrigation project for $850,000 that would run from 2019, '20 through 2020, '21. As we look forward, those are the big numbers. The other big number we would get to would be in 2022, '23. We have $225,000 budgeted for the turtle run irrigation project.
Okay. Few questions. The $20,000 for the driving range mat, is that a replacement? Or is that an addition?
That's a replacement.
So the mat, we already got it. That's no good or any, you're anticipating it won't be good in another year or so? Is that how long they last? That's about, how long have we had that? Do you remember?
I think it's, part of it is the age of the mat. The other part is the availability of a much better product to encourage that use.
All right, let's get into the irrigation, because I'm really confused. I've got notes here from a meeting that was held on June 23rd. Page 25, it starts on. Of course, you guys don't have that. But anyway, it pretty much says, there was, Mr. Stevens was here from Casper. He's the, I can't, what's the word?
Regional agronomist?
Agronomist, yes. And I'm just going to quote the notes here. It's not verbatim to what he said. It says, Mr. Stevens said, the course has to have a functional irrigation system. And stated to completely redo the irrigation system, the cost would be about $1 million for 18 holes. It's a logic, and then he says, you suggest how we can pay for it, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, there's other notes, but in this one, it was a million dollars. Then I go to the meeting that we had November the 3rd, and we got this chart, and they recommended, Casper recommended irrigation upgrades for $245,000 one year, $233,000 to deer. And then I went to, there was one other one. Oh, the 2017, 2018 budget. It wasn't even, there was no irrigation conversation whatsoever. So I guess my, my question is, we seem to have a lot of different numbers for doing the irrigation system. And I don't know what the right number is.
And that's a good question. And the question is based on how well you want the system to work. So the-
But Jim, I mean, the one comment in this report is that your guy said it was a million dollars to even do the pipes. That was everything.
Correct. So this is separated out into, there's two primary parts of the irrigation system, which is the piping, and then the actual system and the heads.
Right.
So basically, $850,000 of it is the piping, and $850,000 of it is the irrigation and the heads. So right now, hydraulic system turns on a bank of heads. So if you want to water one area, you have to water two to four other areas.
I know. I'm not disputing what you're saying. What I'm disputing is that your guy, your agronomist, said in June, told this group here, or told Sunland Lake, that was a million dollars for 18 holes. And I think they all gasped at it when they were told it was a million dollars for 18 holes.
Right.
So now, now it's going to a million seven.
So that million represents fixing the-
It was a new system.
Correct. Well, you have a body of a car that could rust out, and you have an engine of a car that can propel the car. The pipes could be the body of the car, and the irrigation heads in the system could be the engine of the car. So you, if your car stops running and it's rusty and it's only going to last four or five years, you could put a new engine in it and still use the car. But eventually, you'd have to replace the body.
You're missing my point. All I'm saying is, your guy said a million dollars to do all of deer, everything, from head to toe. And now you're telling me it's a million seven from head to toe to redo deer? I'm just saying-
I think you're missing, I think you're definitely misunderstanding what you've read.
You want me to read it again?
You can read it, and I can understand that that was the way it was written, but that's not, that's not a real number in the real world to redo pipes and to redo irrigation heads and to redo satellites.
Jim, just, this is a point of clarification. You just recently did this. You went through the study. I believe you did it with Earl as well, and I saw the paperwork from Earl. So the numbers that are reflected in here, let's say they were incorrect in the other document, for whatever reason. The numbers for budgeting purposes, because that's what we're looking at, a capital plan here, to understand it, are the latest and greatest, the $850,000 for, over the 2, the 19, '20 and 20, '21 budget year, if it was to be adopted. Those are good numbers. Those are good numbers to work with on the capital plan?
Correct.
Okay. I don't, I'm not sure why there's a big difference, but, you know, if that's the number that we have to work with, you know, in a capital plan, it's a working document. I understand it's going to change, as long as it doesn't drastically change by, you know, 400,000 on each of those years, then I could kind of live with that.
Did you see, did we see a worksheet that spells out the million seven?
I saw, well, actually, we had the workshop. We had Rainbird come in, and we had Toro come in, and they did pretty comprehensive presentations. They talked about if they did in fact do the pipes, it was one rate, and if they did in fact do the whole system, it was another rate. And there was a lot of confusion there early on, and I think Ron, even you came in at a follow-up meeting because we were trying to figure out what was really going on. I just want to make sure this number that we're looking at is a good budgeting number.
Yeah, the discrepancy there is, is the piping. I mean-
I think that's what the big difference was.
He did not recommend the piping at that time because I think he didn't want to scare us, which he, which he did even with that, but it's, I think this is the redo of the whole thing.
And this is the worst-case scenario anyway, correct?
And I'll pass this over to Earl, who's done the study. The point that I want to make that I think is very important is that there's a lot of golf courses that have the exact same golf course, the exact same course, and depending on how much or how well you want your irrigation system to operate, how efficiently you want it to disperse water, how long you want it to last, that's going to change the price of what you're doing. 1.7, and I'll let Earl address this, is to do it right, is to have state-of-the-art.
Obviously, I came in a little bit late, but-
Earl, just for the record, will you mention your name?
Earl McMinn. Coming in late, but I think that you guys were discussing the difference in the numbers. It is piping. I think the, when Toro and, and all I've been able to do is read docs, but I think when Toro and Rainbird came in before, they were really quoting hardware, meaning they were going to change out all the hardware, do a two-wire system, have the control system, that type thing, but it didn't address the piping. And the reason that I kind of put deer on the front burner is that deer's a 40-year-old system, and yes, there's been things done over the years, but the piping is the original existing PVC piping. We have tremendous issues with valves not working on that golf course. So, when you have an issue like a simple leak, you can't isolate holes. You have to turn the pump station itself off to do that type of work. That's why it would be the priority out of the two. Both having greens loops with enters and outsiders and having them spacing done correctly is a priority on both, but, and that's kind of the way we took the approach to look at what's the best way to do it, what do you absolutely have to do, and then what does that number reflect? One of the things that we're going to be looking at over the next few years is the re-permitting of our deep wells with Swift Mud. They're going to want to see that we're trying to be proactive on reducing our water usage and dependency and things like that, and one way to do that is the added control, so.
Thank you.
Is the Casper management aware of what's going, of this number? And agreeing to it?
No, absolutely. Yeah.
Absolutely.
We worked to get Libbold Irrigation System to come out.
Again, I'm all hung up on this June 23rd meeting when we were told A, and now we're being told B. What has happened in eight months to change it by $800,000? I'm confused.
The piping was not reflected in that first meeting, and I can have Mike Stevens here at the next meeting since he did the presentation with the team. I, so I can get you those answers.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from Mike myself. He can call me.
Sure. I'll help him reach out to you.
Because the way I read this, I don't believe that's what I read.
Yeah, I'll make that, I'll make that call happen and also touch base with the other board members too, so we don't have to wait until the next meeting, so.
I do have another question other than irrigation. The $50,000 for the two signs, Jim, where would they go?
Oh, the signage?
Yeah. Two signs, one for each course?
Yes. The signage is a board initiative. Tanya, if you could speak to that because you're more, you have more information about that than I do.
The signage was developed by Don Bell Signs, and the board didn't actually install these signs. Where would they be installed?
Yeah.
The turtle run sign was going to be installed between, right off of Columbus, between holes nine and 10, somewhere right in that, that area, right off Columbus. I do know that. The deer run sign, I honestly don't remember where the location was. I'd have to research it.
And the purpose of the signs is what? Just to identify where the course is?
Hole one, it would be at hole one? Okay.
I'm sorry?
Mike Hurley's saying hole one. So, this was an initiative from a previous board, and so we're just carrying it forward. You know, if, if there's any interest in doing these signs, we do have it on our long-term plan, but we can certainly remove it.
Okay. I don't see a reason for it.
I guess the thing is, I'm not sure if we're at that point right now where we want to take out this and put in that, unless the board is adamant to say, take it out. I think at the budgeting time, when we do the budget, that we'll look at maybe more the detail, but right now, I'm just, the questions I think a lot of people are going to have is say, okay, it's going to over, I did a quick spreadsheet, real quick, and it's like, over the next five years, that capital plan is just under $16 million. And that's not counting for any kind of inflation, so we're looking at $16 million. So, my thought process is, this is great, this is a great start, we'll refine it, it's a working document, and I would say, let's start to figure out how we're going to pay for some of this. But the other thing, and it's, and I'm not picking on golf, but it's riddled throughout this whole document, is there should be a roadmap that we should be able to adhere to fairly closely, and there's items on here that have been moving targets for four years. Some small, small items, in fact, things that would make, in the case of, let's say, make it a lot easier in the restaurant and pub, and more efficient if they had a $12,000, you know, tablets. I mean, that I think should be pushed up at the very beginning because that impacts immediately service, and it's a small ticket item. So, I don't know why that's been moved out year after year after year. And I'm not looking for an explanation right now, but it's, it just says to me, why is that happening? And as we go through this, I mean, I love some of these ideas, but some, there's some pretty big ticket items on here, and we have to kind of look at it a little, little closer, I think, and if they're really necessary. We've been pushing out the turtle run golf for restrooms. That's been a moving target year after year after year. I mean, got to kind of put a stake in the ground here and say, what are we going to do and how are we going to fund it? That's my perspective on this whole document here.
And we're looking for priorities from the board. So, feel free, if you, you know, as we discuss certain items, if you want to discuss, this is discussion number one today. So, if you, if there's certain priorities that you have, feel free to express those as we go through the pages.
So, would, Tanya, would this be the appropriate time to say, we don't want the $50,000 in the Don Bell Signs? And strike it?
That's, I mean, absolutely. I mean, if that's-
My vote, yank it.
Okay. I have no problem with that.
There's, just to reiterate what Mark's saying, Tanya, I mean, I looked at this and said, oh, my God. And, you know, I, I'm a proponent, I guess, of five-year plans, but I'm going to five-year plan guy one year at a time, if that makes any sense. But there are capital things that we have to do, like on the golf course or certain things we have to do, but I'm in favor of a lot of this, but I wasn't prepared to debate what, but other than, I can't wait for next year for us to get into what we want next year. And we can have, I think Ray's a proponent of doing the five-year, but maybe not staying with it, and that, and that may be what we can do, but-
I think you've got to have some- I think you need a roadmap. You need a roadmap.
Well, yeah, we could put it on there, but it's just-
Well, I think we have to chop it down to where it's-
Yep.
-reasonable. You know, right now, it's, to Mark's point-
Yep.
-16 million is maybe a little high.
Well, there's, there's just a lot of, I mean, it's just, and I, I guess if we want to go through this, we can do that, but my God, that's going to be a long-
I saw this as everybody's wish list.
Yes.
Yeah, pretty much, I think. Is that be correct, Tanya? Everybody's wish list?
Yes.
I mean, if you looked at the year, the capital plan, the five-year capital plan from 15, '16, 2015, 2016, it was, not that we received everything on that wish list, but it was $8,753,577. Now, when we look at the five-year plan, like I said, it's 15,000, it's 15,993,000. That's not quite double, but in a very short span, so I mean, got to kind of look at it a little closer. Anyway, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Maybe we want to have a workshop to chop it. Not now, I mean, but-
Yeah, I'd-
Down the road more?
I'd agree.
Do a workshop?
We'll do a workshop before the, before the budget meeting, I think, just to kind of cut through some of this, specific to this five-year plan, if that makes sense. Okay. Okay.
I mean, there are some other questions, just, that we'll need for when we do our workshop.
Is there any other questions on irrigation, right before we leave that subject? Earl, can you just spend just a minute on your, on your briefing with the consultant on the irrigation? Can you talk about that just a little bit?
I mean, as far as what went into that?
Yes.
So, I actually consulted with two different companies. One's Libbold Irrigation. They're the largest irrigation contractor in the world. They've done more top 100 golf courses than any other company out there. I know John Libbold, have a personal relationship with him. He lives in Sarasota. When I came on board here, I called and just said, hey, come spend some time with me right around, look at what we've got, talk about options that we might have. Here's the guy that installs, whether it's Rainbird or Toro, it really doesn't matter. He installs them both. So, I went through that process. Then I took another step and called Tony Alton, who's an irrigation consultant, who has been in the business about 35 years. I've done a golf course both in Savannah, Georgia, and in Sarasota, Florida with Tony in the past and said, hey, I've looked at it with Libbold. Can you come out and kind of give me some ideas and let's talk about what the current, you know, what today's budget numbers and when you're doing 18-hole equivalents to like what we have on deer, you know, let's, let's talk some round numbers to kind of have an idea of, for me, as I go through due diligence on what, what we want to do. So, we spent the day together and, you know, went through both courses, talked about, you know, what our needs are, looked at spacing on greens, things of that nature, talked about the age of the golf courses. It was not a typical, you know, before we would go to any process where we said, this is what we, you know, need to do, this is, you know, we would do quite a bit more due diligence and really get into the nuts and bolts of what we've got out there. But in today's environment, to do an 18-hole equivalent to deer, you know, the number can be anywhere from, you know, that number, you might get as low as one five, depending on how many heads, how much acreage, you know, the number could go as high as two on some projects for what we have as far as what we're trying to do control-wise and the size of our golf course. That's, that's, you know, it's a round number, obviously. What would be the next process is if we said, okay, yes, we think this is something that we want to really explore and look at. Tony's, there's other guys other than Tony Alton, but they would come in and do an overall analysis. They'll grid out what our current greens spacing, things like that are, and then they give us a, whether it's part of a workshop or whatever, they give you a pretty detailed look at, this is what we can accomplish by doing a new system, and then you, you know, if you get to the point of saying, okay, yes, we want to do that, it's no different than if you're trying to build a new house and you get somebody come in and do your, your plans. That's essentially what we would wind up with. That's what Toro and Rainbird would then use to bid our hardware, meaning piping and wiring and heads and sprinklers and things of that nature. That's what they work off of to then, you know, give their proposals. The, you know, when they came in before, they're just giving you kind of a round number of hardware versus hardware. So, that's, that's where I wound up with, with Tony and the process, and, you know, there's some numbers in that document that I gave to further that process with Tony Alton as far as our due diligence goes.
I read a number, I think it was $6,000. Is that for the design and layout that you were talking about? They would come for $6,000? They would look at the course, the drawing?
That's for further due diligence, that's for more site visits, that's for us to really delve into what it is. His number as far as the actual design fits into the bid number when you actually go to bid. So, it wouldn't come directly necessarily from what we're doing in that process. It's, it's tied into that 1.7. Any number that he would add goes into that number. Meaning, if, if we get through the process, he does our initial stuff and we provide bid documents to those companies, any other money would go into that number, the 1.7 number.
Okay, so that is not for an analysis and study of the irrigation?
It is. It's not for the actual design.
But it's not for the design?
Yeah.
Do we have that $6,000 in the budget now to do, Jim?
We budgeted $60,000, or pardon me, $160,000 for the irrigation upgrade that we currently have. I believe it's around $148,000 that we've currently, $150,000 spent. So, we have $10,000 that we earmarked for contingencies based on what we would want to do with our current irrigation system. So, I believe, Tanya, that the money is available if we chose to do that.
I was referring to phase one and phase two of the design, the evaluation on the design, which comes to $6,000. We have the money for that, you're saying?
Well, we have $10,000 in our irrigation budget for this year, yes, so we have money for the $6,000.
So, the answer is yes, I guess. Thank you.
Also, the district has consulting funds that we can use, of course, that-
Tanya, I just want to briefly say, Mark touched on this restroom on Turtle. I know that would, you know, I know it should make a heck of a lot of our ladies happy if we did this, and it's, it's something that, I know we, we have some money. I don't know if we still have it. We have money that we're going to spend on our electronic sign. We have, we have some money, but I, I'd like to see when we get into talking that maybe we can move that up maybe to this time. It just, it's up to us, but that's, that's the kind of improvements I want to see that can, people can really see and use, and it's certainly used out there. It will be. So, I just wanted to bring that up because I don't know when we should bring some of this stuff up, other than this summer, but I just want to alert my fellow supervisor, but those are the kind of things that I'd like to see accomplished. And if, I'd rather build that thing, that restroom with that money than, than what we had planned to do, so, if that's available.
We're pretty much done with golf? General fund?
Well, let's start with the pool. A million five for the pool complex. I'm just curious, I think the number was a million dollars last year, now it's up to a million five. I was just wondering, what exactly are we trying to do?
The size of the pool that we proposed last year was a little smaller, about half the size. We were proposing a larger pool, and also, we would have to do a lot of paving and, you know, accommodate for additional parking and that sort of thing, so that's kind of where that increase came from.
The community center thing, we're going to probably table- The community center thing, we're going to probably table that for a while. Community center renovation?
Well, I, I don't know, I mean, again, with the announcement from Florida Hospital, I think as far as their new fitness center, health center, well, it's going to be a wellness center, anywhere from twenty-five to thirty thousand square foot type center. Um, you know, we can't obviously compete with that, so, again, um, there might be some other renovations that we can do to this complex besides fitness. You know, I, we really haven't gone into those in-depth conversations, you know, about this center at all yet. So that, that was a game changer, and that's only been in the last few weeks, so, um, we'd like to keep it out on our long-range plan, at least for the next couple of months, until we can discuss this further.
So I would, so we'd probably move all the gym exercise equipment, move everything back, do we have a better feel for what's going to happen? The, you know, obviously, the dog park obstacles, I would recommend that we move them up, since we're building the dog park now, instead of waiting two years?
I have a question too, Ray, on your, um, Uchi Ball, or
Bachi Ball.
Or Bachi. He's a Boochie. I must have known somebody named Boochie, oh, it's my eye doctor, Boochie, that's, okay. Uh, is that going to, are we going to try to do that, or are we working with Drew to?
Yeah, Drew, uh, we had a meeting a week or so ago, two weeks ago, with Tenille, and, uh, based on what we saw, what I saw over, Tenille and I saw over at Tanglewood, we've challenged Drew to draw up plans to expand the racket club, to where it has the capacity to do additional, uh, what do you call it?
Pickleball?
Pickleball courts, and we would have the facility to do Bachi Ball and Shuffleboard. And we would, you know, obviously, we'd get a whole number, and then we'd divide it into three, and decide if we wanted to go forward with it. So he's drawing up the plans, and then we'll come back to the board, but I still, I, I still think it's an important, uh, thing for us to pursue. However, the expense, to be honest with you, is probably going to be, and I'm guessing, in the area of fifty thousand dollars for each of them.
For each?
Probably, if you're going to do it right. So we may not want to do it right.
I think you might want to plan that out a little.
It's not golf, but it is something that other people in Sudden Lake could probably take advantage of.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll come back and see.
But you're working on it, though, right?
We're working on it, yes. Good, keep working on it.
We got to have more than golf.
Okay, general, the general fund. I, I did see something in here, and I think you definitely need to look at the district renovations. That's another moving target from last year, which at that time was a million dollars, it's a million-five. Help, help me to understand, oh, we went five hundred thousand dollars, how?
There's been so many ideas, we don't really have a concrete, uh, idea of whether we're going to keep that existing building and renovate it, uh, put a board meeting room inside of it, uh, there's been discussions on buying that piece of property across the way, and building another facility, so there's so many unknowns, and we haven't come up with a plan, a long-term plan.
Okay, so, so me to, I totally get it. So the corner lot, is that the one you're referring to? That we've been trying to buy for all of this time, and they won't sell it to us?
We haven't tried it any further, we tried one time, the board at that time chose not to move forward, we haven't heard anymore.
Well, I think they wanted like three hundred thousand.
Three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's what they wanted.
Is that what they want, yeah, I think we came in at two-fifty.
And they told us to take a hike.
They called back, they are still interested in selling, and they're
Okay.
He's willing to make a deal, but it's up to the board whether you guys want to pursue it.
So if, so if you're looking to do a million-five, and not quite sure if we're going to do renovations or a, a new facility, and that's for twenty-twenty-one, shouldn't we kind of be looking for a lot, or shouldn't we, or not looking at a lot? I mean, this is not going to happen in a, a year or two, you know, it's, it's, it takes three years of good planning to get this done.
If you read the plan, it's
What?
Two-point-seven, it's not a million-five.
Mark?
Hmm? So, and Mike's telling me, when he met with Goldsmith at the time, a million dollars was to completely build a new facility. One-point-five was the budget for complete renovation, because it'd be more costly, uh, relocation, all those other costs that.
There was a million for the new building, but then you only had three hundred thousand, or whatever it is, for the property to start to increase.
So because we haven't had any interest, we didn't pursue the million plus the three hundred.
Okay.
We're just going with the idea, we're going to go ahead and renovate that building.
I was just curious, inquiry minds want to know.
That's a moving target too, Ray.
That kind of jumped out at me.
It continues to be a moving target.
It goes up thirty-three percent in one year.
Projects keep coming up.
Oh, Lord. Any, any questions on the general fund?
I'd like to touch on the kitchen renovation for the clubhouse.
Okay.
We received some supplemental information yesterday. Omar has put together a kitchen expansion project, overall cost with financing options for the supervisors. There's also a island view restaurant revenue and expense summary, broken out between banquet and à la carte. And then there's also a spreadsheet that lists the restaurant closures for events in two thousand seventeen.
Guess my comment would be, are you kidding me?
For kitchen?
Yeah.
The cost for the kitchen?
Take the, the labor expense and take ten percent of it to banquets, and ninety percent to à la carte? That, that makes no sense at all, unless you're saying that we're going to have all these people there all the time, and you're adding one or two for, just for banquets, but, I mean, that, that doesn't make sense to me. If, if you're going to portion thirty percent of the expenses on everything else, then why wouldn't you portion thirty percent into that? I mean, is a, logically, that doesn't fly.
Right, so the
I can make one look good, and I can make the other one look bad, you know, it's kind of like Mark Twain said, you got three different kinds of lies, lies, damn lies, and statistics, so I can make it look however you want it to look.
So the, the basic, the basis of the synopsis is based on the, the kitchen staffing, and what changes when you host a banquet is basically the floor staffing. So, um, right, right now, whether we just have à la carte on the right side of the building in the island view, or whether we have à la carte on the right side of the building in the island view, and the banquet facility operating, uh, we have the same number of people in the kitchen, whether there's people in the banquet room eating or not. So the, the difference in labor when we host a banquet is how many servers are hosting the banquet. And so that's why the labor burden is only ten percent, because the only additional staff you have for the banquet is, is the servers, which basically work on gratuity, it's a six-dollar-an-hour server. So your question would be, you know, hypothetically, if you have two million dollars in revenue, a million from banquets, and a million from à la carte, do you, do you split the labor in half? If you wouldn't have that labor, even if you didn't have the, the banquet? So that's the reason it's ten percent, because all you're allocating is servers, and a portion, and a portion of the salesperson's time.
Dan, I reviewed all of, I reviewed a sample of weddings and some other events from the detailed analysis of each event, and the labor cost is about an average of seven percent of the revenue. And that gives you a, and, and I came up with a conclusion based on the sampling that I looked at. And then, and then, talking with Jim, we both agree that that, that was an appropriate allocation for the banquet. Um, but I, I did review samples of the different weddings and the events, and I looked at our profit margins, but I also looked at the labor cost, which is very, very low for our banquets.
That's because you're, well, I'm not going to argue with you, just, just, if you got, then you're going to tell me the same thing, is we need to put a banquet kitchen in if we're going to do two kitchens, in essence, what you're talking about doing, we got to hire another cook. The logic doesn't work here, okay? If, if we got enough cooks to do banquets and à la carte at the same time without adding anybody, then wha- You follow what I'm saying?
Well, I think what Dan might be referencing is that with the new kitchen design, we have a cold pantry station, um, and even if a banquet isn't happening, we have, we have an extra staff member. Because of the new design, you know, we'll spread things out, and people that are doing, you know, multiple jobs now, because of the design, wouldn't be able to do that, so it's not banquet-specific, the new design does add an extra person.
But to me, it, it, it just comes back to, we're going to want more banquets with these figures, because that's what does it, and that's what I, you know, I, here we go again.
Yeah, which means you're taking it away from the residents, again.
I guess the question I was trying to understand, why will we want more banquets?
Bigger profits, wouldn't it be, if we already got the staff there?
Are you speaking for the board? Because we work for the board.
Mm-hmm.
If the board tells us to get more banquets, then we'll get more banquets. If the board says our banquet level is what we want it to be, to maintain this level of service for à la carte, that's what we'll do. So we're not
Okay.
One-point-four million is, is a big number, okay? If we finance it, we throw another four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand on top of that, bringing that total debt to roughly one-point-nine million over that term of the, of the way we finance. Either that, or we pay for it out of our pocket. One way or another, we're going to end up losing. I think there's a fine line as to the benefit that we will receive. Forget about return on the investment, because I don't think there's anybody that's sitting in this room that would even guess, there's no way we're going to get a return on this. So what I see as the benefit is, among many things, but the benefit is certainly, you could provide faster service, so you could get meals out à la carte, and, and as well as banquets. That also requires that you put more waitstaff out there, you should be having more staff, because it's, now you're going to get the food out faster, so you have to have the waitstaff to bring it. Benefit is maybe a very, a varied menu, which is nice. The benefit to the residents is maybe a more pleasurable meal, I don't know. But the bottom line is, it's still the same seating capacity. We do not, we're, we're making, you know, potentially a one-point-nine million dollar investment on a footprint of a, of a building that has no more seating capacity than what it currently has today. I don't know what it is, two-hundred-and-fifty or two-hundred-and-eighty people. And there've been, there has been some talk about enclosing the lanai, and I don't know much more that would include, but then, that's an additional expense on top of it. And there's even been some question about blowing it out the back. And of course, we have a consultant doing the study, and, you know, there's, there's a thought process there. If this community grows, then we would be able to sustain and, and pay for, uh, these enhancements. But I, I'm, every time I see this number, it seems to be going up every time. And if we pay for it cash, it's one-point-four, and if we don't pay for it cash, it's one-point-nine. And then I got to look at the economics of it. I think there's one-point-nine million we could put into maybe a new district office, you know? Anyway, that's just my, for what it's worth.
And here's, here's my take on this whole thing. We have an unlivable situation right now, um, there's safety concerns. There's obviously the, the concern for, um, not being efficient, if you will. And we're going to have to make a decision to either enhance our capability dramatically, or to back up and redesign our process and, and make it fit the existing facilities. This is not the kind of thing we can do part of, because part of it will benefit us nothing. It's not the kind of thing that can be phased, because phase one will benefit us nothing. And I'm not anxious to spend a million-four, or a million-nine, or any other number. We were asked to take a look at what needed to be done to make the kitchen be what it needs to be, and these are the numbers. So if I were voting today, um, if you want to keep things exactly where they are, and improve service and, and speed and variety and all those other things, it's money that has to be spent. If you don't want to do those things, um, then it's money you don't spend. But, uh, we're doing an awful lot with a very inadequate facility as, as it exists today, so, we've looked at every alternative that could be identified.
Tanya, Mike, did I read this right, that we've spent twenty-nine, or almost thirty thousand dollars already on this?
Yes.
Which surprised me, but, uh, we, we just soon have to make a decision when one of the other guys, I mean, you know what? I want, I want an improvement in that place, but, and I agree with Joe, I mean, if we don't, if we don't expand it, then we got to do something different. Um, but I'm still looking for a, a number, because I, hell, we've already spent thirty thousand dollars, and what this board sometimes worries about is that we, we pushed away a hell of a lot more than thirty thousand dollars. Uh, and I just think we need to do something, but I'm still looking for, for somebody to, to give me that.
Well, we've got a number in front of us, okay? It's either one-point-four and some change, or one-point-nine, okay?
It's not, it's not one-point-four.
It's one-point-four-two-nine.
Loss of, you can't, what are you going to, loss of revenues is not something that we're going to have to spend money on. We're going to just lose money, but that, we're not funding that.
It's a cost, it's still a cost. We're losing the revenue that we would have had.
You can't, okay.
You know, if I gave you a hundred dollars today and took it away tomorrow, you'd, you'd lose it, wouldn't you?
If you're funding something, you can't, okay, that's fine.
We're, we're closing down, the loss of revenue is when we close down the kitchen, is, is that true? So that's going to come out of the bottom line.
But that's not part of the Subsidy cost that's going to come one way or the other from the district.
You're not financing the, the cost, the loss of revenue.
So, okay, one-point-three-two-nine.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Plus four-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand.
If we go that route.
Yes.
And that's without adding one seat?
Right. If I remember, I mean, here's, the, the question comes down to, do we want to improve the kitchen for the, for the, for the people who live in Sudden Lake and the community around it? That's the question. If you don't like the number, I guess we could go out and challenge another company and spend another thirty thousand dollars, for somebody to come in and tell us a different way to do it. But until we face reality and say, we're either going to do it, or we ain't going to do it.
Well, I'm, I'm not su-, I, I think there's arguments on both sides, or discussion on both sides. I, for one, am not ready to spend I, for one, am not ready to spend that kind of money when there's other things that need to be done, okay?
If we vote... We vote? No, we're not voting.
No, it's not a vote. It's a discussion's part of the budget, or part of the five-year plan.
Here's what it comes down to. Something has to change. We cannot... And we'd be foolish to try to continue where we are without changing something. So either get out of portions and phases of the business or invest in the facility to accommodate the business we have. And it's really pretty much that simple. If you wanna go to a soup and sandwich shop, which is what the design originally was, we can do that pretty inexpensively. But the relative cost of that will be lost revenue also, so it's kinda like pick your poison. We can't continue to do what we're doing.
Does the board wanna see the numbers on enclosing the lanai? That would add about 80 to 88 seats under air.
Didn't we have one on... We had some preliminary numbers on that, I thought.
I think we... Yes. I mean, they're not hard estimates. I mean, it's just an estimate. I also have some estimates from a local company as well.
Why would we...
So we can... I can provide those if you're interested in seeing those.
I don't understand why we would ever enclose the lanai.
For the extra capacity.
We have capacity there now. There's people sitting there having dinner now.
You can't really take reservations, 'cause you don't know what the weather's gonna be. So if it's raining and boiling in, you can't... You don't know if it's gonna rain or not.
That should be the only problem. I... Yeah. Okay. Well, I don't see that... I don't see that time... Many times when the dining room is filled up. So...
Can we come to some kind of consensus here? What are the wishes of the board? Do you have any particular feelings towards this? Do we wanna continue to pursue this? Do we wanna have a discussion about not pursuing anymore? Where do we wanna go from here?
I would like to know if we can cut back on the banquet business and focus on the local people who live here, on the a la carte business, and what that would cost us to fix the kitchen in that manner. I think the kitchen has to be fixed. I agree with that. The question is, do we spend... Before it's over with, it's gonna be $2 million, 'cause you gotta close in the lanai. If you're gonna justify building a bigger kitchen and having a double kitchen, in essence what you're talking about, then you gotta put in more seats. I don't know that 88 more seats is enough. You may have to expand the dining room eventually, and sooner or later, as the community grows, maybe we go there.
I think this started out with a pizza oven for you.
Yeah. I'm sure glad I brought this up two years ago.
Pizza oven.
I still want my pizza oven. I agree with Dan. We have to do something. 'Cause I've heard that Kevin, if we all went into the kitchen and looked at what they're doing in there, it's probably very unsafe. I just can imagine that. And I'm willing to keep looking at it and maybe doing away with some of the other banquet business if it doesn't work out. But I just think we need to do something for our residents here. I haven't heard too many of my compatriots out there that are in favor of this, but I think they're mostly looking at it as a financial thing as far as a business, but I don't look at it that way. I wanna improve that kitchen for our members and the people of Sun and Lake. And that's the way I'm gonna look at it, whatever way I vote. I don't care about the cost. We have to do something here, and if we keep growing, the kitchen is gonna be the number one thing. I think it's an attraction to our community, which I think it is. Our golfers are, and that's all part of that restaurant up there. So I wanna... I don't wanna kill it, but I certainly wanna keep working.
So are you saying that you wanna look at maybe an a la carte side, just one side? Because that's kind of the direction that Dan was leaning, okay?
I don't know if that works, but...
We don't know if it's going to work. I thought, and maybe you guys can chime in here for a moment. I thought that Schultz said he looked at every possible way of making that kitchen workable. And he... Unless we do, in fact, say to him, we don't want the banquet side of it, maybe he can do something. I don't know. What was your understanding of that, Joe? 'Cause you work very closely with him.
What we... What this proposal is, does enhance our ability to service the banquet business. The important thing to note is that the majority of the banquets are club events. They are the ladies' member guest, the men's member guest, the Valentine's tournament, you know, you pick it. This facility was unavailable to the members seven days last year for events that weren't club-driven. So you're talking about getting out of the banquet business. Are you not gonna have the Valentine tournament and 255 people for dinner afterward?
You don't have to have a la carte at the same time.
Are you not gonna have New Year's Eve? Are you not gonna have Valentine's... I mean, we serve 280 people Valentine's Day just for supper, and they paid a pretty premium price for steak and lobster. So if you're gonna get out of it, you're gonna have to get out of it, and you're gonna have to forego a whole lot of things that the members and the residents enjoy and probably don't wanna give up. I don't.
I don't know enough about the restaurant. You did a lot of the studies with this. I don't understand why we can't have a single kitchen to do most of the events.
I don't see this as a double kitchen. I think the things that we have looked at, the things that the architects are proposing, will, with no banquet in the facility, still enhance our ability to serve the a la carte business and to serve a building full of it if we have it. So now, are there pieces of equipment we could forego? I can't speak to that.
That's over half the money is the equipment.
I understand that. It's 600-plus thousand dollars.
Right. And the issue for me is, the equipment is gonna have a useful life of seven to eight years. So if you look at... You've got a long-term capital deal here that's half of it. Then you're talking about redoing that equipment in five more years or seven more years. This is gonna be an ongoing treadmill you're on.
Yeah, just like the golf course.
Yeah.
We should put... Just put a name on this. This is a golf course renovation, and we'd have all the support of everybody.
I don't think Jim has a comment?
Well, what we can do is, we can go back to the architect and kitchen designer and price out what part of the equipment expense is to enhance a la carte. Because we're redoing the whole a la carte side of the kitchen to basically increase our production by 400%. So our window of plates that can be produced is going to go from eight plates to 32 plates on the a la carte side. So hypothetically, we could find out that $400,000 of the kitchen equipment renovation is for a la carte and $200,000 is for banquets. So we could forego the $200,000 for banquets, but what we're then tying into is we're looking at taking that banquet money that makes us a profit every year or reduces our loss and putting that away. So we're gonna invest six or $700,000 into making an a la carte kitchen and then make us $50,000 to $70,000 less profitable per year, because we're not gonna do banquet business. So, I mean, that's a study that we can kind of bring forward, 'cause that's what I think we're looking at. It all rolls back to the... One of the keys of this business is it's a high fixed cost business, and volume is what makes restaurants either lose less or make more money. And the demand for banquets in Sebring is there, so by bringing in that volume, it makes us more efficient. But I think we can easily do that, you know, study of changing and looking at not doing banquets and a la carte, you know, at the same time.
I think that's the issue that's bothering me, is that we're saying banquets as one total. When you're talking about the Sweetheart Tournament, every last one of those are members, that you're not gonna have any a la carte. So we don't necessarily have to have banquets or no banquets. They could be members or residents that are here. So, you know, that's... It's not necessarily one or the other. I'll give you another business proposition, if you will. It's pretty darn easy to show you're making money when you're not depreciating any equipment at all and you're not depreciating any of the building expense. If you plug those numbers in, you're gonna be losing money big time, no matter which one you do. This isn't an issue of making money or not making money. But what we're doing is taking the availability of the restaurant away from Sebring or from Sun and Lake residents when we have an outside business. You close off the... It became somehow from a banquet... From a dining room to a banquet room. So we're now closing off the dining room to Sun and Lake residents for an outside deal that we're really... You can say you're making money if you want to, but you'd depreciate the equipment. It's not happening for you. That's my biggest issue.
So when I listen to Dan...
We need to fix what needs to be fixed.
And I apologize. I thought you were done. When I was listening... When I listened to Dan, this rolls back more into a strategic plan of what we want our food facilities to do.
That's right.
And so that does tie into Henry, because it... Into the delogue team.
Yes, it does.
We wouldn't lose any of the banquet business we have now, would we, if we just made it a little bigger and did the a la carte stuff? I mean, I'm not looking to close anything down that we're doing, but I wanna make it safer and I wanna make it better for the community.
The difficulty that you're dealing with is, and if you go back to CJ's presentation, first thing he talked about was flow. And so when you look at the under-roofed part of the kitchen, it's in an L. You know, it's not in a square or it's not in a rectangle. And so when you enhance the a la carte side of that operation, you enhance it with better burners and better cooking, but you don't change the flow. So if you don't build the other side, the banquet side, you still just have more cooking power, but the same problem when you're trying to do a banquet and an a la carte, so...
I mean, how much money would you consider acceptable? See, that's what... I'm getting a little confused. We all agree we have to do something. So I don't know what the right number is personally, but I mean, you guys, what number would you accept? I mean, I know what you're... I mean, I'm not asking for an answer right now, but I... You know, we want... To Jim's... What do we want this place, the restaurant, to stand for? Do we wanna be able to attract people to Sun and Lake? Because one of the great things about it is the golf courses, great restaurant, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, that's why we hired Henry. Maybe we oughta ask Henry what he thinks. It's not a bad thought.
I asked that question yesterday, and he is gonna address it. I asked him to come back to us and talk to us about the marketing value of having the chamber banquet, the board of realtors, some of those folks here. You know, I don't think a wedding necessarily enhances our ability to sell Sun and Lake, but some of those other events might. So that is on the table for him to take a look at.
Yeah, I mean, the last thing that I want to happen is, let's say we spend half a million dollars, and then three years later, we're gonna have a conversation about spending another six or $700,000, 'cause we didn't do it right the first time.
That's the same issue with the Deer Run irrigation. We can half-fix it or we can fix it. And I totally agree. But I think we have to sit down as a board and as a community and figure out where are we going? What do we wanna be when we get there?
Right.
Where are we going and what do we wanna be? And I don't think we've had that conversation. This kinda came in the back door.
I'd like to wait till Henry, hear what Henry has to say.
And that's why we're paying the guy. We oughta listen to him.
When will Henry get in?
On March 9th, he's gonna give a debriefing to the board by telephone, and he's gonna discuss, you know, his summary of his visit on Wednesday. And we can... And I'll give the board more of an idea of where we're headed. I know there's a lot of work that's gonna go into the analysis part of what we've given him as far as data, and he'll... So he'll debrief the board on March 9th.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right along. Utility fund.
Is Mike?
Uh...
I got one. I got... I have one of the utility... Mike, tell me what... An infiltration study is $400,000. I don't... What is it?
I'll speak on that. The infiltration study, it's more of a cleaning of all the gravity sewer that we have. We did it... We did it back in 2011. 2011, we did it. And what they do is they have a vac truck, and they pressure wash the inside of all the gravity lines, and they also camera all of them, so we can see if there's any leaks or if there's any manholes that have any leaks. We've been experiencing a lot of infiltration in the gravity system, so anytime it rains, the flow at the wastewater treatment plant goes through the roof, and that's not good to keep the system working right. And that's not... That's not something the DEP wants to happen either. And we've experienced flows high enough that it's coming to the point of the capacity of the plant, and we shouldn't be... We shouldn't be seeing that. So this is a maintenance measure to check and see what the sewer lines look like and to seal them.
Could that number be split? You know, do we have to do it all at once, or could it be...
We can split it. And the estimate we have here, we hope is high. The only thing we don't know, we're basing the numbers off of discussions with the contractor that did it last time and the other bids that we received, 'cause it varied greatly on the different bids that came in. So we wanted to make sure we had enough. But what we did last... The last time we did it, we did the district, everything except Tanglewood, and then we did Tanglewood the following year. So we can split it up if we need to.
Drew? You mentioned something, I'm not sure. Did you say that because of this, potentially because of the problems when you're running the site, that we're at capacity or near capacity in the wastewater treatment facility?
Yeah, at times. Whenever... When it rains very heavily, like during the hurricane, we had a ridiculous amount of rain. And what's going on is the water table goes up and/or if we have manholes that have cracks in them that we don't know about, or pipes. We found, like, the last time we got it videoed, like Comcast had drilled through gravity sewer when they were running the service under the road. Stuff like that that can happen, that we don't know about until someone has a camera, then checks it and cleans it, and then we can repair it. And as we go along, they fix it also. You know, they fix all the cracks and holes and the manholes, and it's, you know, it's, you know, preventing the maintenance is really what it is. So that's why we need to have that done. And we can do Tanglewood a year after. It doesn't make a difference either way.
So looking at this, the surge tank upgrades is a higher priority than the infiltration?
Yeah, we actually just received a letter from DEP, and they were... One of the items was the surge tank. We're planning on sealing it next year, and one of the items is they called out the leaks that are on the outside. And that's something we do need to address before they... Yeah, the...
Now, didn't we just seal some others, though?
Right.
I was gonna... We did. That's the other one? Okay. Thank you. Moving right along.
Before you go any further, I did have one question for Tanya. When I was reading through this, I'm gonna forget the name of it exactly. When I was reading through this, I forget the name of it exactly. Basically, where you're talking about renovating the district office? And you had a survey. Basically, as I read it, they said you should, it was going to cost us $2.7 million. Where they were talking about building a 10,000 square foot facility or renovating the existing one. So we got $1,005,000, but they're saying 2.7 or we?
Is that Goldmith, Goldsmith and Associates?
Yeah.
Is that the survey? They were estimating about $200 a square foot. Does that sound right?
It was on the higher side. They had a drive-through and they had just, they had some big ideas. We feel like this number is more, more in line with what we think needs to be done at the district office.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure we weren't looking at another number that was going to grow on us. It's on page eight of their survey.
Right. Yeah, he gave us two plans on that and we were really, the other one was just, uh, to do the main office, so.
Okay.
I guess the rest of this, actually this book is nothing more than the supporting information on the equipment design.
Or want to review one of the line items?
Yeah.
You can go to those page numbers and there's, staff has written descriptions and objections and justifications as to why, pictures, some have quotes. So it's a lot more detail as you go through, through the book.
Big section on irrigation in there.
A second question, I just wanted to confirm with Omar that I'm reading this right, the general fund analysis you gave me. So when we're talking reserves to balance, in essence, you're talking about taking money out of our reserves in order to cover. So our revenues aren't covering our expenses?
Well, in the general fund, they have been. So in the first, in 1516, we had an excess of $270,000.
Right.
But once we start adding all those capital items for golf and general fund, then we go into a deficit and we have to pull from the savings in order to balance the budget.
And that is in addition to the 1.8 or whatever number it wound up being for the maintenance facility?
Correct. In 1617, 1718, those do not account for, 1617 had 1.2 million that we spent for the maintenance building and then there was another $500,000 that was carried over in the 1718.
Okay.
And that does not count.
So in essence, one of the reasons we need to look at the survey of the, of the assessments is that we are actually pretty much running a deficit, if you get right down to it, when you put in the capital.
We don't have the ability to sustain a lot of capital. And that's really what we need to do as we go through the budget process is start prioritizing these large capital projects. Cause if, for, for next year, we have, let's say we do the kitchen, it's 1.4 million. After that, you've got an $800,000 expenditure for irrigation. Then we have another $800,000 for the irrigation on part two, plus the district office. That's $4 million in three years. And our reserves, we have about $2 million, $3 million that we have available to spend and be at where we recommend our reserves be.
Right.
So we're getting to the point where we, we can start paying for these things cash, but we're going to get to a point where we don't have cash available to start spending for all these projects. And we still have a lot more down the road, you know, pool complex, all these things that we want to accomplish so we can plan accordingly and figure out how we're going to finance these items in the future.
Second question then on the utility fund. What large future stuff do we have coming? Are we going to need to renovate existing plants or are we going to need to add plants as we grow?
I don't have to ask Drew on that one. I know there has been discussion about needing a new plant. You know, it's going to be a lot involved with the county having these ownership and lots, you know, they just put up 70s lots for sale. So we envision a lot of development here. And as that development starts to grow, we're going to need more capacity at our sewage waste plant. So it just, it's going to depend on the economy and how the growth of the district. You know, if we add all these great amenities like a huge kitchen and a new district office and a recreation center, that's going to attract more people, which is an increased flow is going to lead to a bigger, the need for a plant quicker.
I mean, that's, that's basically where I'm going.
Right. Hopefully for those type of large expenditures like a sewage plant, we can go out for grants and try and receive state funding. And they have state revolving loans that are at 0% for 30 years. So we have some options there. So we can, we feel comfortable with some of those large expenditures.
I just got one comment. This document, in my mind and in my experience, is exactly what it should be. It is a wish list. For us to sit here and debate anything beyond fiscal year 2019 and '20 is foolish. There's little, if anything, on this list that isn't going to have to be done at some point in the foreseeable future. So keeping that in front of us in the form of this budget, this five-year plan, I think is a positive thing. And so we move things next year into the fifth year, which is now year six. But it is a working document, but it does identify our future spending needs as we see them. And again, there may be an exception here and there, like $30,000 for science five years from now that we can pick apart. But for the most part, looking at these longer-term projects, I think wasting our time now discussing the validity of the numbers and all those other things beyond '19 and '20 is probably not efficient.
Guess we're done with that part. Okay. Add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Staff reports?
They started the drainage this morning. The survey's been done, so, and the letter's been all sent out. So you may be getting questions from people, what's going on, just so you know.
What was it? I didn't hear you. The drainage.
KDL.
KDL. Oh, okay. Okay, in case of any questions. But they were out this morning early and, so we're moving on with that.
I don't see Jim here, huh? Jim, Ron, and, okay, did you see if they were out there or?
I don't see them. Do you see them? Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, I don't, I'm assuming he's, some reports.
He usually does.
Thank you. Earl's got something he gave us. Yeah, I know. We're on staff reports.
That's okay. I didn't know if you had anything further this morning.
Yeah, just real quickly, the things that I'll run through is just some updates on some hot topics. Our GPS on our golf carts, we have, we have gotten 20% of our fleet retrofitted with new, you know, totally rebuilt units and we're having good luck with those. So I have reasons to be positive, but we're definitely not out of the woods in any way. But they definitely are expending the effort and we're finally starting to see the product. As you see in Earl's report and his assessment of the golf courses, he's doing an excellent job of, of going through actually our, our infrastructure along with our course staffing and then along with our capital to put together a plan for improvement. Just a couple highlights on our financials. As of just a few days ago, membership year over year to date is up $38,000 compared to last year. Green fee revenue is down $72,000. And we're, we have $25,000 that we're over relative to course expenses that you can pretty easily tie to the hurricane and golf course labor that you can, can tie to the hurricane. And then also us, us having the, our mechanic on, on our payroll for two months that we thought would be on the districts. Beyond that, the, I would just, since this is my last district meeting, I'd just like to thank the board. I'd especially like to recognize Tanya. She's, she's been great to work with and she's a great, great asset to the district. I'd like to thank Ron. You know, Kevin, Andy, the, the team that I got to assume didn't happen by accident. And I, I wish you all could see how good of a team and the people that you have working at that club. I mean, they're, I, I hope I can work with staffs like that in the future. Any questions? That's all I have.
Actually, I was going to save it towards the end, but I, I wanted to, I wanted to also thank you very much for bringing this discourse to the next level and this golf operations to next level. And Ron, I guess Ron had-
Yeah, a couple, Ron Wonderling for the record from Billy Casper Golf. One, thank you, Jim, for the last couple of years. You've, you've done a great job and, you know, continued the momentum that, and brought a lot of good, great things that happened over the past two years. With Jim leaving, obviously creates an opening and we've talked to each of you individually about it, but I just want to talk to you about the process. So over the past few weeks, we've collected a numerous amount of applicants. We have really all walks of life, but we went to the club management route, the PGA route, also Indeed and some other digital search engines. Plus we have a core of people that are currently working for the organization that are interested. And then we have a core of people that are outside the organization. So we've, we have a recruitment department that have been going through the resumes and sorting them. Our plan is to get them down to a small number to then have live interviews here at the club, which each board member will have as much ample time as you need to review the applications prior. And then when they come, we'll set up appointments over the next couple of weeks to, so that, so the candidates that have not seen the property and the candidates that have seen the property that want to come back are, we have, we have an internal candidate here at the club. And then we also have, like I said, external. With the process, with Jim leaving on the fourth, would be his last day, I'll actually start coming to the property on a daily basis. I'll get you a manager on duty schedule for the times that I'm not here. So in case something happens to the club and you need to get hold of somebody or Tanya does, I'm always available, as you know, by phone. But it's always to know who, who can someone go to. So I'll circle back with you individually through Tanya about the times that, and days that you're available. And the end goal is to find someone that both the board and Billy Casper Golf can, you know, agree on, because it is a partnership and, you know, we definitely want the right person to continue to lead the club from a day-to-day operation standpoint.
Do you have a feel for how many candidates you're going to narrow that? Is it three to five?
Yeah, so, yeah, typically, I know the last time when Jim went through the process, we, we got it down to two really qualified candidates. And, you know, typically we like two, two, two to three. And then if we put two to three in and we don't have a good consensus and we feel, okay, we need to, need to continue the search or dig deeper, we, you know, we're there to do that. So.
Thanks, Ron.
I got one.
Good.
One question and a comment, if I may. On, Earl did this, prepared this, I guess we got it yesterday, very well done, by the way. My question to you though is, is, is the changes that he sees that need to be done, are they included in the, somebody's budget or the five-year plan or? I mean, he's recommending or he's identified a lot of things that need to be addressed. And I just was wondering how we're going to go forward with it.
Right now, the changes are for discussion. They're not, they're not incorporated into any plan for costs.
So.
Yes, so for the budget that's currently approved, those items are not all in the current budget that's in there. So as we go into the budget process and the workshops that are forthcoming, these will be incorporated into that mix.
Okay, that's how we do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is the first step in the process, obviously notifying you of, of things long term. And then we'll, you know, through the budgetary process, we will prioritize them and say, okay, this is how we see it. Cause like for trees and stuff, it doesn't have to be done the first year. It could be a five-year plan and we're going to tackle certain areas at a certain time. Absolutely.
Then my comment, just because this is my favorite subject with Jim. The GPS thing, 20%, this company's really, how shall I say it, taking advantage of us? And I'm just going on the record of saying, it's ridiculous. Again, I know you've done everything within your power to get, to make it better, but I am just telling you, this company is just screwing us. Period. I'm done.
Yeah, the, the only, I guess the information that I would have relative to the company is that we, we did purchase the units. They did have a one-year warranty. You know, the units are out of warranty. We currently pay $12 a month to support the units. Replacement of the units, like Longboat Key had to replace their units and they're, they're paying $35 to $37 a month for their unit. So if we wanted to replace what we had with something more reliable, it's going to be three times the cost. So I do agree though, I've been very disappointed with their, I would say, improvement. But we are seeing improvement and there is, there is a reason to be encouraged. But basically, I'd say the report card's out and we just need to, to see what they're able to do in the next 90 days. And actually, our, our maintenance contract is only through the end of this year. So we can easily evaluate at that point, if not further, earlier.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. General counsel report?
There's been movement on Ayala. As you probably know, not the greatest movement, but we are back in circuit court. The, the, our, our motion for rehearing and the Pope's and Counsel's motion for attorney fees has been all dismissed from the, from the appellate court. So we're back in circuit court. There are, three of the counts were dismissed, basically the three fraud counts, fraudulent misrepresentation, aiding and abetting fraud and conspiracy to fraud, those are gone. They're, they've been dismissed with prejudice, can't come back. But we're still facing, we're looking at three counts, one for negligent misrepresentation and then the two counts under the Unfair and Deceptive Trade Practices Act. Those two counts under the Unfair and Deceptive Trade Practices Act will most likely go away because of the ruling by the appellate court. They didn't dismiss it, but they brought up information that when is, when that information is heard by the trial court will probably get thrown out. Which looks like that the only one that will remain is the negligent misrepresentation. Now, the two unfair and deceptive trade practices act counts, those are the ones that are not covered. I think I misrepresented that at the last meeting, I wasn't sure. But those are not covered by insurance. The negligent misrepresentation, which is the one that's likely to continue, is in fact covered. So if we end up going to trial, it's likely going to be on that one count and that, that will be covered by our insurance. So as far as the timeline goes, I don't have the foggy, but I do know that the, we're operating under the second amended complaint by the plaintiffs, that our response to that, I believe, is due next week. And that's, so that's going to be filed next week and then we'll be moving forward. We do have a new judge that's on the, you know, that's sitting on the bench now that's going to hear, but as far as a, you know, from a starting point goes, it's basically, it's a, the complaint's the first part that you address. And even though we're dealing with a second amended complaint here, you know, that's basically going to be, the court's going to be looking at, here's the complaint and here's their response. He can kind of ignore everything that's happened in the past, so.
Thank you. General managers report?
Thank you, everyone who participated with Henry Deloja on Wednesday. I benefited from meeting with him, you know, and it is, he's going to be an asset to us, I believe. Thank you, Jim. Good luck. I wish Jim the best. And as we move forward, change for this community. We're looking forward to, to a new, a new year. Thank you.
Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
No committee reports.
A famous time. Public comment? Get the timer going.
A couple of things. I'd like to second the President Kemp's comments to Jim. We, as former golf committee chairperson, I appreciate all the work that we did and the cooperation. We wish him the best of luck in his new endeavor. Really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Secondly, we went through a lot of expense for the clubhouse. The kitchen- the kitchen, you know, it's just, as, as Dennis says, it's, uh, a million four, a million nine with, uh, interest, is just, uh, out of the, it, it doesn't make any sense right now. I think there could be a reevaluation of the kitchen to make it, uh, more modern or, uh, so that you can handle a lot, a large group. A couple of things that, uh, that they wanted to expand the clubhouse, and they expanded on, on the, uh, on the tennis court side and have a new entrance, which I looked at and I said, it doesn't make any sense. Mike Hurley and I discussed the back of the clubhouse two years ago, in which you would have a semicircle, 180 degrees, you've got a beautiful view out back there, uh, you have sunrise, sunset, you can have breakfasts there on Sunday morning, and to spend $166,000 to expand to a nine, doesn't make any sense. We have new curtains out there and it looks beautiful, and it was done expeditiously, thank you. And it just seems, oh, that ideas don't preculate to, we have to have consultants all the time. Now, I've suggested a couple of things and it just seems that fallen didn't, defies. And it's like expanding the back of the clubhouse, like if I went to a golf course called, uh, Metro, it's in Orlando, and if you went there, you could take a look at the back of it, it is elegant, and it'll be fun, and then in the off-hours, off-days, uh, season, you can close it off, and then save on heat, electricity, and all those. So, you know, there's all kinds of ideas, whether it be a Sunday brunch up there, not $20, but a Sunday brunch up there that a lot of people would like to go to, because a lot of restaurants are closed on Sunday. So I think it may be some thought to increase business. I know Larry White, uh, come up with, uh, a gazebo type of thing. Uh, you wanna expand your wedding venue, that gazebo, it sounded like a great idea, and it went over like a leg below. I'm sorry, but I think it would have been, because I've attended weddings out there, and it would be nice to have something appropriate. It looks good and it would attract a lot of people. Okay, the last thing is that we've been discussing the parking for the school up there. You know, there's 700 children in that school, and I have a personal interest because my granddaughter goes there. And they have kicked the can down the road for eight months, trying to figure out how we can get parking back, or how we can have a different route, or how we can make sure the security is really appropriate. Now, we've got a lot of the commodity yesterday, which I'm gonna give everybody, because you're gonna get calls from your constituents, they're gonna say, what the heck is going on here? To close the gate on ponds so that people don't park in the hospital, all right? Because some people coming down that grassy slope, there are some big people, and if they ever go rolling down that slope, they take out a truck, I'm only kidding, come on. So, so what I'm saying is that, no, this, uh, pregnant women coming down there, and it was just a mess, and there was no crossing God, no sink, river. So anyhow, the, I think, uh, the thing, the 17 murders in Parkland is kind of like, had, had a better interest in security and parking, so hopefully, uh, hopefully this will change things, because what they're gonna do is gonna bring in all the vehicles inside, but that doesn't mean a bad guy can't get in there either. So we're gonna have to insist on security out there.
That's your bottom.
Because I don't want to hit, uh, a bad thing to happen, because once it does, it's labeled for the rest of your life. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was in the paper?
It was, it was in the paper.
Well, I may wanna, I know, just in case you, uh...
Thank you. Oh, you know, actually, you'd wanna thank Tanya, she had many, many meetings with, uh, the school board, as well as the principals down there, as well as, uh, the church, to look at all different alternatives. So this was not something that happened overnight, it did take a while, Bill, but there was a lot being done behind the scenes, it just maybe didn't happen as quickly as some people would have liked to see it happen, but it has happened, and hopefully, this will work out. Hi, Larry, how you doing?
I wasn't gonna mention it, since Mr. Murkross did, yesterday I had the misfortune of trying to go to the doctor, and as I came north on Ponce de León, I could not get onto the circle. Probably aware of that, because all the people picking up the kids had blocked the intersection. Traffic was lined up all the way to the, um, new building, the, uh, fire station, and traffic did not move, and finally, one person backed up so I could go onto the circle. I guess my mistake, because I went at 2 o'clock to go to the doctor. I know you guys can't do anything about it, but I mean, somebody would have the sheriff or somebody out there to, because that is, uh, I believe, uh, property that's owned, owned or placed by the, uh, county, so I think, I mean, if, if, if a fire truck or something had to get through at 2 o'clock, they couldn't get through, people were double-parked in the circle and refused to move. Anyway, thank you for letting me bring that up. I, I listened to this million and a half or whatever for this restaurant, uh, I wonder how we're going to, if you start at the Olympic Restaurant and go down to the watering hole, every night, those parking lots are filled, people eating in the restaurant. So you have to have a plan, is how are you gonna get those people to come to Sonora Lake to fill up our restaurant? We keep mentioning the fact that it's for the residents, maybe we should redefine that, because I doubt if 80% of the people, residents of Sonora Lake, frequent the restaurant. I looked at that budget that they had, and the restaurant had some fine ideas in there. I laughed, because I wonder how many people are gonna pay $32 for a chili and sea bass dinner in Sonora Lake? Maybe they'd like to have chicken fried steak or something. I don't see that many people going to that, taking away from that, from the community. Right now, there are two empty restaurants in Sonora Lake, or not, excuse me, in, in Hy, in, in Sebring, that have been vacant for some time. There was also another restaurant person that didn't want to come in here because the demographics was not conducive to doing it. We wanna spend million and a half, whatever that figure was. So take a look at it, board members, you wanna do that restaurant for the community? You wanna do it for yourself? Thank you.
I forgot why I came up here.
Yeah.
There is one thing I'd like to know, when you, when you do a five-year plan, usually that first year is already made up with the prioritized items. You know what number one item is, and you know what the bottom item is. You know how much money you've got planned for that first year, and you know where to draw the line on those projects. I assume that's what's being done? Are we just talking about throwing items on a five-year plan?
I think that that's part of the whole phase process, and anybody can jump in. The, the intent was to look at items, prioritize them, and then go over a five-year plan, at least that was my understanding of how they were to come about on that. That's why we had a little bit of discussion earlier today to say, you know, even the ones that are further out, should we be moving those maybe into this coming year's budget, and should we be moving others out? So to answer your question, they haven't been prioritized on a sheet now, 1 through 10 yet, but that's, that's the goal we're working towards.
What point does that come out? I mean, as a, as a citizen in the community, I'd like to see that, so I'd know that, hey, these are the things that we're gonna spend money on, for sure.
Well, I believe that there's, there's basically two pieces to that. One is, the workshop that we'll be having, we'll start to prioritize some of those, and the second part would be the budgeting process, when we actually adopt those items for the budget. Am I correct? Thank you.
The capital plan is attached to the budget, is it not?
It is.
Yes.
So when the budget is finalized, the capital plan will be finalized, at least to the extent that we're even doing it.
All I'm leading up to is that at different points during the course of the year, somebody's gonna come forth and say, hey, you know, this item that's out in year two is now important, and we've gotta put it into the budget this year, so something has to drop. I just wanna make sure that that process is wide open and everybody sees it, because we're talking about a lot of money in a lot of different places that... Okay, having said that, the other thing is, is at some point, I think a couple of meetings ago, I had asked, uh, I was trying to find out how we settled on $15,000 when we did a settlement, okay, with, uh, Billy Casper, and I was trying to find out what the individual estimates were, because I wanted to know how the average was, how, how we got to that average, because it just seemed low to me. So is that available? Can we talk about it? What?
I think that, David, you, you have to address that, because you sent a memo.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if you wanted to talk to the individual supervisors, if they're willing to give that information, they could, um, but basically, my recollection is that there was a, they had individual discussions with Tanya, and there was a, basically, an average taken.
So it'll never come to light, is what you're telling me, unless, I can get it by asking each one?
I'm sorry?
I can get it by asking your supervisor what...
If they're willing to tell you, correct.
Okay.
Tom Coste, resident. Um, I'd like to know who the custodian is of the flyover films that we've got for both Deer and Turtle. They're no longer available online. Um, I've got aerial views of the area between, at the end of, uh, Fairway Number 10, I've got street view, both of those are quite recent, within the last couple of years. Uh, the only thing I don't have is the flyover, which would give the front view, there's been a absolutely drastic change in the appearance as you go down the fairway of Number 10 on Deer. I'd like to know who's got custody of that flyover that's no longer on the website, and how soon it will be available.
I'll go ahead and look into that and get you an answer on that, that's, uh, something that I'm gonna have to research.
Okay, it's, it's, uh, on the golf, it's on the golf, um...
Website?
Website. That's has-been, has-been for some time, but, uh, those links are now dead.
I'll see if I can get that.
Thank you.
Jim, the GPS system, you said that, uh, our, our maintenance agreement's gonna run out, and then it's gone? I mean, I, I was under the impression initially, I don't know if the, are they hedging on this initial agreement they had? I know initially, as long as we paid the, the yearly maintenance fee, then it, nothing, nothing goes on forever, I realize that, but it, they would replace these, even, even replace them in a new fleet if we changed fleets?
Yes, as of December 31st, the contract will expire, there's an option for us to, to enter into another contract.
So as long as we pay that, then they'll continue to replace and repair?
I believe there's another two years on that current contract.
Okay.
That we can option it.
Okay. Uh, Tanya, what do we have on a payback on that dollar, uh, odd, dollar around, uh, that's transferred over to the general fund to pay for that?
I don't have an exact figure, but for this year, the payout, payback was about 6,400.
6,400?
Yeah.
Only 6,400 rounds?
No, 6,000, 6,400 to be repaid back.
Yeah, but 6...
Balance to be paid back.
At a dollar a round, it's, you only got 6,400 dollars?
And advertising money that's taken from that, that lump sum total.
We probably paid it back by, by now, we have all the figures, but...
The agreement was, every outside round that you collect, a dollar goes back to the general fund to pay for the GPS, and there's only 6,400 rounds?
We can send you...
One round left on that balance, between the last three or four years. So it started at, let's say, $50,000, we've taken how many rounds every year, 30,000, 30,000?
Oh, okay, so you only got 6,400 dollars left?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
No further public comment? Discussion to and from the board?
I could start. I got three things. Uh, first of all, Mike, I wanna, I wanna talk to you about hole number 10 on Deer. I'm just really happy the way it looks, I'm glad you did what you did. Uh, I can't wait for Hornick to maybe, uh, expand in the other parts, but I'd like you to work on, at least of getting a consensus, the rest of that, the rest of the woods, looks like, it's terrible, and it's all, I don't know if that would be a Jim and Ron Casper thing, because I think it's all your guys' stuff that's dumped there, as far as, um, grass, you know, grass cuttings and...
I think that's already been cleaned up.
Uh, well, it did in one place, but if you go over towards Sonora Lake Boulevard, there's a lot over there and a lot of piles of, uh, I don't know what, what it is, but, uh, I don't know what the other ones feel like, but I, I'd like to see that all cleaned up now, if we could, um, because it looks so much better. I mean, I'm just really happy the way that looks and, uh, and I, I hear they're gonna do some drainage and take a couple more trees out? But it's just a couple more?
Yeah.
Is that, okay?
Just a little drainage and a few trees, but it's, you know, we try and clean it up, so...
But I, I'm happy with it, and I hope the rest of, the board members are, but it looks nice, so... Uh, contract, Dave, uh, for the Billy Casper contract, I remember, at least a couple meetings ago, didn't we say that, that they are not responsible for anything that goes wrong? Any, any financial with those greens and so and so?
No, no, that's not what it, there was a, the indemnification clause talks about them being sole, if they're, if it deemed that they're solely responsible for the damages, that's when they come in and then indemnify it, as, and I talked about that, you know, even though that that's what's in the contract, in, in my opinion, it's unlikely that it gets enforced that way, because Florida's a comparative negligent state, and if there was, if we basically made a negligence claim, that the court would assess, you know, responsibility, but amongst any parties that, that, you know, were named, as far as who, who could be responsible.
Uh, what, what if, say, for instance, one hole, golf course, or both golf courses were destroyed? We have no other alternative except maybe take, maybe 25,000 this time, probably? I mean, do, are we protected at all?
Yeah, I mean, if it's, 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 it depends on who's negligent, that's the, that's the thing, who's, who's negligent? So the, I think the issue with the greens, or the greens issue, was that it wasn't, they were, like, they're... they were, like, there was no doubt there was a breach. The question is whether or not they were solely, solely negligent. And because of the circumstances, or at least my understanding of the circumstances around that, I didn't feel that it would be advisable to name, I mean, there was a breach named, and there was, there was restitution done, but to actually file a suit wouldn't have, I don't think would have worked out well for the district.
Okay, well, it just, probably never, nobody would ever take full responsibility of it anyway. And I just, because I've heard from a couple pros that are retired here, and said, they would love to have a golf course like that, that they could, somebody could wreck and then argue about, get it, and have to pay $15,000 to get it, to get it taken care of.
Oh yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I'm not saying it's not a possibility, it's absolutely a possibility to sue in the contract. That's absolutely possible.
So we're, there's probably no way we could ever redo a contract that we...
Redo a contract, they would have what? They would have absolute liability?
More responsibility?
Well, I mean...
As far as money?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could absolutely try that, that we definitely could have decided.
I'm not sure they would sign it.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't know if there's any one that would actually sign it, because, but it would sure, I would feel better at least, because I'm sure there's more than just one out there, but it just, and I just want to protect us more, because I, I just actually believe we really got, we really got zapped, but that's, that's for another issue. And I'd also like to, if we could, just for us to consider, in, in the future, when we have one-on-one talks with our employees, like Jim or Tanya, that we could do those kind of discussions in public? Because it seems to me like it's, it gets messed up somehow. There's always something that's, it isn't, it isn't right. And I, I really would like to, because you know how I, even when this side thing come up, I wanted to do it in an open meeting, and it didn't get done, and I just, I just feel it would have been, a little better if us five would have talked about it here, and there would have been no questions asked. So it's just something to consider, and it's...
And I totally support that. If somebody, if Mark were to ask us to, ask Tanya to pull us for that kind of thing again, I would strenuously object. I agree, it needs to be in this venue, so.
Well, just something, if it comes up again, I...
I think it's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I've been on, a couple, couple years on the board, and it just seems like a few times it's gotten somehow misinterpreted, and it just ends up more of a employee making the decision than the five supervisors, to a point. And I just, I just want to bring it up, if that, if that happens, that's all I have.
I think there's merit to that, but I also think that, well, one, I would be very cautious myself on some of the disclosures in the public forum, because I think it could be damaging, if it gets out, I mean, just, you know, it could. So I would, you know, if I felt uncomfortable, I would probably just say, you know, I wouldn't, I'd just refuse to respond to it. But by all means, if the board wishes to go in that direction, then that's fine. I just, I caution what we do, say in the public forum, sometimes.
Yeah, I don't think we can afford to handcuff ourselves. I would agree that the whole issue was not handled properly. My, and I initiated it. My thought was, we would send a representative to negotiate with Billy Casper, not that we would send them a letter saying, and that's kind of, I think Charlie Shields, he's already gone, but he said they didn't pass the dumb test, and he's exactly right, we sent them a letter saying, this is what we want, as opposed to going in there and saying, hey guys, you know, it's your 60 grand, what are you going to do about it? My thought was, we would get to a point where we would come back to us, or whoever negotiated with them, tell us this is the deal that we've worked out, and then we would then approve it. But by the time it got sent, it was done. And I just don't think that's proper. Now, that's, that's an unusual circumstance, that we probably should handle in a different manner, in the future. But I don't think we can afford to say, no, you can't go talk to Jim, and you can't go talk to Tanya, because, given the sunshine law, we can't talk to each other, who the heck are we going to talk to? Somebody's got to figure out some way that we can manage, manage this district in a reasonable manner.
And I didn't, I didn't mean it to close ourselves out, but at least open a discussion when we have this, that maybe we could handle it here. I mean, I don't want to block us into anything, but it just seems to me like there's been a few times that, that the complete desires of the board weren't quite met, and I just, I would like to, for us to stand together, and whatever that is, it is, so, okay?
Sounds good. Sounds very good. Any further board comment?
Nope.
Here's your turn.